If we have form, call this meeting to order. I want to be a second reading of order in December 1908. This is the contemporary annexation for the industrial foundation.
The second reading of the ordinance is 1908.
Thank you, Commissioner Powell. We're here, second. Second. Thank you, Commissioner Sears. Any discussion? There's Madam Clerk, Donna Peet. Good call, please.
I'll go the first time.
Mr. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Sears?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Mayor Perry?
Yes.
We have developed a summary that was already added back to the great publication and sent it today.
Once again, I apologize for being late. Business gets in the way.
You don't really excuse.
Like I said, business gets in the way.
You hope not to find that.
That is not. And my only preparatory remark, and I'm going to let Ron take it from his perspective, but I continue to appreciate the professional and personal chemistry that we have. I appreciate what we have gotten done. I appreciate the mannerism in which we've gotten it done. I appreciate the time when we might disagree. We disagree, move on, and that's the way it should be. I think we've gotten quite a bit done this year, and I'm really not walking out of it pleased, I'm proud of that. I think we've got a lot more to do, and that's what we call job security. So with that, Mr. Scott, I'm done. I'll let you take it from here.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. We are recording this, of course, even with our policy of transparency. It might be a good opportunity as we begin our level of informal discussions made in a retreat format. If the commission wishes to just to state what expectations you might have with this meeting, I can give you mine if you want me to do that. I guess much for saying that, I'm going to do that. This is an opportunity, I think, for us to revisit during our process, where we are with implementation of projects that are underway, kind of assess how we're doing on that, and to, as a very preliminary stage, identify maybe some challenges or issues that may have developed since we approved this budget back in July or June, and to get an early start on maybe next year's budget priorities and to see what may have missed or what may have developed since that budget was approved. I don't know that we'll come out with any real hard and fast final conclusions today. We may on some issues. We have legislative issues that are coming up, and we might reach some conclusion or some direction on some of those, but I sort of see it as an assessment period for us. And unlike prior retreats, we didn't spring for a big box of getting a retreat facilitator here, so you'll have to deal with me and our very capable staff in terms of answering the questions and providing information. But I don't know if you had any comment to your individual break in terms of expectations, what you're hoping to achieve in the next few hours, or my hopes that we can make a greater consensus and priority.
I'll concur with that. I think it's a little, we might start with discussions on what we want to do as far as they do, but because it's a little premature about going revenue numbers and things like that, but that's for a moment there, see what everybody's thinking. But I think the review of where are we and how are we is important.
Great, I think you did, I think you've done well to shout out to all of us and ask for opinions, and it seems like you've got them all here in terms of what I delivered to you for discussions. Okay. All right. Anybody else?
I'm hoping that in the coming budget, we can, we can find a way to, can assist the city engineer in here to provide some relief, to hurdle, to cover the necessary territory on a daily basis that one man cannot humanly cover. I think it's time that we, as we grow, I think it's time that we look to hiring a HR person because it's a growing, it's a growing thing, and I think there's some liability that we have without a dedicated HR person. And that would be a step in our direction, even with all that, you're still going to be operating on a daily, weekly, monthly, yearly basis.
Okay, with that great beginning, let me suggest we look at a review of what we've accomplished thus far in the fiscal year by pulling out the winter edition of our quarterly newsletter. This is our second edition, and we're creating this and distributing it to all customers of water delivery in order to have other communications and make an input on service issues. And this second issue will be received first week of December by people throughout the county and all of our customers, that don't exist in residential. The feature story of that, of course, is what we talked about just in our last commission meeting. That's what we've been into upgrading our water meters for remote, for green, and we're doing a private project of that, and a select number of smaller, a number of folks who've tested that before we begin the entire process beginning in February. But all of our $8 million in energy improvements and the meter replacements really will not be completed until, obviously, next year, no, in 2018. So it's a lengthy process, but it's very significant advancement in terms of management capability and efficiency, and we'll say in the morning in terms of, however, having to read the leadership. Inside this report are what I call our short top 10 list, a memory-related letter of top 10. And it's not as funny as it is word, but nevertheless, let's think about what we have accomplished in the recent past few months. One of those, these are going to be the orders, of course, is the location of our view of our treatment plant facility that provides equipment now and today, which provided up to our county and to the five counties of the United States of California, and is obviously a key to our quality of life as well as to our business future development. And I think some, Tony, some of the recent business inquiries you had, I'm sure that keyed around the fact that the water is key to activities here, particularly in the city. So that's certainly a big achievement, and we designed it, worked for the park, and got a grant from local utility, and we'll be completing that, I guess, June, July of next year, Earl. We've renovated Whistler Park. There are perhaps some fine tweakings that we might want to make to that, and we'll have discussion of that later, but I'd say that's a big accomplishment. Finished quote under budget, if anything is ever quite finished, because as places are used and age needs change somewhat, but essentially we can wait for each capital pretty much. I mentioned our energy efficiency improvement projects. That is a very significant thing. We took over two years in terms of initial introduction of that topic to go through in the diligence of evaluation of section of contractors, the evaluation of projects, adherence of that, and the fact that they were papered, so overtime and energy savings, and plus some guaranteed by contractors, and that's a win-win of the taxpayers to see in terms of covering the cost of the capital outlays necessary to replace individual equipment now.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yes.
Just a brief one. Our trip to Fort Knox with the train folks, and they had people dedicated to monitoring the energy usage, or is that something we're pursuing? Are we, is that going to be a new position, or somebody currently on staff going to?
Quite a bit of that is automated for us. The reason they had it staffed to the extent they did was because of the, you know, the footprint of Fort Knox is kind of like the totality of Bull County.
Right, oh, yeah.
Right, so they were, they had people there monitoring the screens and monitoring that consistently because of that footprint, right? So we're doing the same thing, it's just we won't have necessarily dedicated staff to the extent they did, but there will be people that monitor that on a frequent basis, but it will be like our SCADA system. They won't really necessarily look at it till it's alarmed, right, which is what, which is like our SCADA system on the water side.
Thanks, Steve. So, thank you.
Train is doing that.
That's an outsourced thing, that's part of their source, right?
Could that be something that might be monitored in like Erica's office or somebody that's staying pretty stationary?
Well, I mean, it.
Somebody needs to be able to hear the alarm and react to.
Well, it's not like that. I mean, it's more of a, it's akin to our SCADA system, right, like where it's not damage that's occurred, it's more of the energy consumption variance that they're monitoring, right? That's their concern, because that's what their assurance is, is tied to the cost of it, right? So if something's miss, not working right, well, I'll know it because I'm going to do the same thing as you get now, you'll get a room that's cold when it's supposed to be hot or vice versa.
It's not necessarily an alarm, as it is just some sort of notification to the right person.
To the people, train, because there's energy being used that shouldn't be used. That's, that's what you're monitoring.
Just more like a pop-up or email or something.
Correct, yeah.
So item number four, our mission program, which is the purchase of equipment. Again, saving $5,000 a year, $10 million over a 10-year period pro forma projection. We talked Monday about the implementation of Open Gov. This is going to be paid for six months or longer in terms of getting into an innovative system where citizens and the commission and department heads can have access to current financial transactions to see how we're doing in terms of adherence to our budget and what our priorities are in expenditures, so that will be a very, I think, useful way forward for citizens. I think we, I will say, we are very open already in terms of our putting on the web of our entire budget, which is a straightforward budget in terms of what's appropriate, which is not quite so clear in a, up to the main point, is where we are in those expenditures, and this will close that gap. Again, only two or three governments in Kentucky have done this thus far, although it has received wide support and growing support throughout the country under our front end, and so it's happened. I think our master part planning, we talked with the county for quite a period of time, a couple of years, getting to the point of incentive that, and we've got people 30 years older, families that, since your last master part, so that's very needed progression, I think. Sure, continued quality of life to meet future, current and future needs. Earl, I don't know if you have just a footnote in terms of how we're doing on that right now.
We're doing good. Right now, we're making efforts to schedule the last round. You know how we went through that couple of days where we invited different people to come in? We got one more day of that, which, for example, the hospital thing's scheduled, and there's some other entities like that, where we're trying to sit down with them and hear feedback on what they see are shortcomings or things that are needed in our quote-unquote "system." And we expect that to occur this week, and then over the next three to four weeks, they'll start to move into the, they will have completed their research, really, is what that means, and then they'll start transitioning into the second phase, which is more the thought development and moving forward. So that will take probably, you know, two to three more months probably before you really get to the core information that they want to tell you.
We have done under number seven, fire department headquarters on Main Street. We've done a deets assessment, made an engineering analysis of the building, and we're still designing things in that building. And we have in our budget plans to issue bonds in 2018 funding construction of a new fire station on Main Street, the site of the bond issue, and for cost associated with final design of that building. That hopefully we can get determined in the next month or two, I would say, probably in December, like January, February. Ron, is there any movement on the property next to existing building in terms of utilizing that property while you're trying to rebuild right where it sits? Well, we're having an analysis of that, and we will have some discussion of that issue in terms of potential, discussion of that may get executive sessions about. We, Monday, had a report, like a halfway, on the equipment necessary to create a dispatch system and the purchase of that, and that's our intent to upgrade our nearly obsolete, almost 20-year-old dispatch equipment and move to the next generation of that to benefit our community by receiving for its test, which is important for our deaf community going forward as well as others who can find themselves in difficult situations. We had anticipated that the cost of that might approach $500,000 in terms of total cost, but probably it's going to be somewhat less than that as we put everything together, so I think the added pricing quotes that we got in the analysis have shown that it's less than the first cost in terms of total cost. But we had provided earlier, and I don't have that now, a more detailed schedule of implementation of that new equipment in the city hall facility as we relocate that for more effective supervision by our police department. But we're anticipating that retrofit of that damn stairs space will begin in earnest in January, possibly, and then in December as the contractor comes in and starts doing work, and we anticipate having everything located and tested and making the switch over April 1. We're going to run both systems simultaneously for a test period of probably 30, 45 days, but we anticipate the implementation of the new center in April of 2018.
Ron, I'm not sure the public will, in this paragraph, will get this understanding of what this new equipment would mean to them.
Well, it's going to, you know, reliability, if your phone works, your needs are met. The problem is that our existing system, it's hard to get parts for, and you have to search, and reliability of the equipment, first of all, was at the end of its lifespan, so we will have a robust, a reliable system. I think the next generation of actually using, having the ability to seek help by video or text is dependent upon the state actually approving the protocols for that, but the equipment we purchase are going to have that capability when it's approved at the state level, as I understand it, is that right, Chief?
And there's also some enhancements, Chief, in each of the patrol cars, correct?
Correct.
What will that do?
Will they be able to see vehicles on the map, location, locate vehicles? The officers will have access to the dispatch screen, the cat screen itself, so for like previous calls to that address, those officers can, they're very busy, they can pull up that history.
Without access to dispatch?
Without, yes. A lot of what it will do will, where we're a short staff, it will eliminate some things that dispatch has to communicate back and forth to the officer, it will make it more efficient, and the same with fire, EMS, and other agencies, they will have access to those screens, so as to, like, for that, like, wreck, an injury accident, we're calling and giving times and things like that for dispatch, fires calling, giving, okay, dispatch, and so does EMS. With that screen and that access, they can get those things without getting on the radio, turning up, what is, turning up dispatchers.
So there's increased communication, increased efficiency, increased safety for police and fire.
Oh, definitely. Like I said, you know, say, for example, an officer is in some kind of altercation with somebody and loses his radio, sometimes happens, I think Junction of the Day was in a pursuit, foot pursuit, lost the radio, and you'll get a lease, know where that caller is, with identifiers on the screen and stuff like that, so those things like that will happen a lot.
Can I ask one other question? So this came up in my special fiscal court yesterday. Will the new software that's purchased have any issues or will there be upgrades needed to radios that communicate with the new system?
No, this, this is just for what we call the dispatch services.
That's what I thought when they asked the question, of course, I had no clue, but that was a concern that they had, if they wouldn't have radios to communicate with the system.
We are upgrading our radio system, but it's not with.
It's not a requirement of the new software?
No, it has not been software.
So, if I may take this while we're on, so where does this come up that it's going to cost the county $50,000 in order to interface with this new system?
It is optional, but it can be in terms of whether they purchase the vehicle tracking location.
There will be modules to the new software, and they don't have to take all.
It's an option, it's not required.
Correct.
Maybe still communicating the basic functions of the system without the new modules.
Yes.
Just that.
Just that.
Yeah.
Good, that's helpful.
We had in our, in our detailed quote on Monday, the information in there that showed that with all your discounts and the memory, I think each vehicle would have the about $1,500, $500 cost for having the remote tracking system. But what that will do, as the chiefs have said, will be the ability for any responder to be on the same page and see all other responders in live time as they're going to the scene, and it will minimize the need and the delay in communicating 911 in terms of who's on first or who's coming, and all those things, so it would be well worth it to have that ability for safety and for efficiency.
And I guess I wanted to drill down on it a little bit, because I think in all of the agreement dust-up, that's overshadowed the advantage, significant advantage from the technology standpoint of view and safety standpoint of view for both employee and citizen. I think that's gotten, that's overshadowed, and I think, I think it needs to be highlighted everywhere across.
That's a great, a great innovation forward, actually, if that's what you say.
It's just improvements. Long-term improvements, really.
So, so sounds to me like real aid is move into EMD. If you know, location of your vehicles, and you have a dispatcher saying, well, they're within five minutes of you hanging there.
Well, and if we are going to implement EMD, then they are free to implement that if they are not constantly having to communicate with the officers and fire, with your services and all that.
It helps, it will help tremendous efficiency for dispatch. It will cut down on some of the things that they, in the past, you know, takes up a lot of their time, you know, dispatching to three different agencies at times, where those agencies can get information now without contacting them a time and a month, so it will free them up soon, it will make them more efficient. I will say though, Stephen, what somebody might be, we are going to a new radio frequency. Everybody, every, you know, the county has a frequency, the county won't have a frequency. We will be going to a new radio frequency. We'll have our old frequencies, we can still talk to all the emergency services, but we'll have a frequency of our own, then until they tell, do what they, P225 apply, they will not be able to hear some of our stuff, it will be scrambled for them, but we still have the ability to talk and communicate with every emergency's partner.
Well, they've been led to believe, and I had a conversation with Ron, they have been led to believe that if they do not hit this certain radio, that they will not be able to communicate with you guys. So we just need to make sure we.
We just try to have some work to develop.
I have told them that.
Yeah, okay. I mean, just as early as, or as late as yesterday.
Right.
That's become a convenience stick to whip the city, tired of that.
Right, right.
Tired of that.
We, we're having some problems with some agencies that are on our frequency, that are using our frequency that should not, we get some agencies access to our frequency so they can monitor in certain situations, those things are supposed to be supervised or something. Those entities have given us that frequency out to everybody that works for them, and they have been on that, our frequency inappropriately. So as we move forward, we restrict that access, but it will not interfere in the emergency services whatsoever. Everything we've done is to increase safety and to, for the benefit of Bull County.
The other important improvement in 911 estimate for dispatch, we gave a lot of consideration to that in preparation of our budget and decided we didn't have the wherewithal to fully staff that, and so we, the full-time personnel required, and so we're attempting the part-time supplement, of all certified dispatchers to supplement our existing staff. I will say, the recruitment process on that is difficult. We have made some embroths, but we're not there yet, and our implementation goal is January, so we've got to continue to try to attract those certified dispatchers to make that happen. Else it's going to be additional challenge for existing staff to also do that, but they're being trained on our new computerized system we bought for that medical dispatch, and so we're still planning January.
What's, what's the primary pushback? Is the?
It just, well, this is the era we live in. Who wants to work in a stressful situation for a pay?
That's what I assume.
That's every era, no?
A part of it, Kevin.
City commissioners do.
You know, we are trying to move dispatch up to city hall, and we are acquiring new CAT software, so, you know, those ladies are going to, they'll be going to a lot in the next six months, clean the move, and the new software for the CAT system, and then we're learning new software for EMD also, and we are short right now there still, continue.
Right.
So, yeah, they, they have a lot going on.
It helps morale, though, too, somewhat, having them at city hall. I thought about that, by having them feel more part of the team by being at city hall.
I think so. I think that's part of our reason for the move.
Just in terms of general theory, though, we have adjusted this salary upwards for part-time certified dispatchers. Under the theory, we're not providing benefits to them, and so we're moving somewhere from existing pay with medical benefits, higher without medical benefits, without trying to cause a morale problem between the two types of employees, so we recognize that it's value in terms of pay that, and employees have to increasingly recognize that their total compensation is the number, it's not what it makes us an hour, but it's also the health care level, that's the idea.
That's a challenge.
It is a challenge, that's why we'll get into.
I know, we just, it all. I know, we just, at our, at our law firm, we have, we started in seven years ago to, when we give out the the wage information for taxes, we also include a flyer that shows these are your total wages, but this is what you pay for the cost of your insurance, cost of your unemployment. And so we do a total figure to see, show in 401K match and to show what it costs us and what is the benefit that you are receiving by being an employee here. And it's striking. We do that as owners because it makes us feel better, you know, to show them what the total package is. I, I don't know if it's always correct, but it's hard to realize the value of the benefits received. It's just natural.
Until you need, until you have a catastrophic medical need.
Our goal is just to put in front of them, that is, this is what you're getting, even if you still like it, you know, that's what you're getting.
We've done that for several years. This year, I have met with every department, every employee, go over that visually.
I've still got some replacing it, but each one, and they see the value, the goddol, the dollar value.
Has it been kind of enlightening, some of what's up?
It has. It's been enlightening a lot.
And if I may, I think this is an area that we're going to need to continue to address is how do we adjust, how do we adjust our compensation for different, for, for people in different stages of life? You got, you got the single individual, you've got the individual that's got a family. It, it, they have different needs, different priorities. Can we structure compensation that will be advantageous to all? As to what their, specifically, a young person coming in is not focused too much on health insurance as opposed to some of us who have kids.
Some old guy.
Broke down.
Yes, it's a challenge. We could get into that discussion. But it is, it is a challenge for many reasons. People coming in with different eyes and different needs and the difficulty in managing an organization is to demonstrate that you're treating people fairly and not by favoritism. And so that's, that's a little bit of a challenge.
Sure. And on the flip side of that, there are significant constitutional issues for structuring payment packages based on, you know, if you're single, you're going to get one package, you can get paid one out because it's not going to cost the city as much. But basically, if you're married and have five kids, you can cost the city a lot more extra money. And so it's seen as it would be marital status discrimination. And it could be just, it could be from a public policy standpoint, it looks to incentivize remaining unmarried. And, and that is detrimental under a host of, for a host of reasons. But there's a lot of constitution implications for restructuring packages based on class like that. When that came out, I knew.
I started waiting on you, right? Stephen, that's why, that's why we waited on you. Ron, before we move off of this, I like this format, but number five, six, seven, and you haven't got number ten yet, but can you give us a, a cost for number five, six, and seven?
We have, hey, seven, we don't get anything in this detail.
I'm going to take notes right now, so I just give you a number.
Implement Open Gov. I think that's maybe for the software is, is modest. I'm going to say ten to twelve thousand dollars, something like that. It's not a great deal, maybe less than that. In terms of the actual software and the addition of that to our website, it was not a very complicated or expensive proposition. Now, staffing it to load all the data in and so forth is where you get into greater cost, actually.
That's going to be done by search that?
Yes. Seven, we don't know the cost of that yet, although I think we anticipate it in the neighborhood of eight million dollars.
No, no, I was talking about just for the, just for the analysis, really.
For the needs assessment and the engineering.
Yeah.
Uh, well.
Was it fifty thousand dollars per contract?
No. No, it was less than that. We're, we're handicapped in that because Michelle is not here, and she had surgery yesterday, but she's doing well.
Is that it in Firehouse Park, it's all?
Uh, yes, we, we have, we have an ending fund available, thirty-six thousand for that. So most recent.
So we're going to get past.
Well, the, the line on here says the master plan, ten thousand, three fifty in process.
That, that's part master plan.
So my.
Firehouse, so, and you made your point, we have maybe set aside fifty thousand for that.
I think it's like tomorrow's.
I think it's twenty-seven four.
Yeah, yeah.
Twenty-seven thousand four. Okay, all right. Well, we've got, cash already paid twenty-seven thousand nine thirty-eight thirty cents is what we've got here.
For the fire department?
For the engineering.
Fire department.
Thirty-six, I believe. Yeah. Well, what I, what I'm going to do is that when this hits the airwaves, it's nice to have those cost factors in all kind of these things, so when I get asked a question, I can put my own cheat sheet out and say, this is what we say it costs us today.
Well, as, as Ben said, as this sheet shows, it's about twenty-eight thousand dollars spent in that, you know, in the American house. So the position building and design thus far.
Then you're down to, you're coming with the fire department. Yeah, I can take ten thousand dollars and keep it apart.
Yeah, the, the, the fee for the preliminary work on the fire department's twenty-seven four, the four hundred. That's what the contract was, the initial contract. Now, once you go into a final design, all that goes to different percentages of construction typically for our.
Sure, sure.
All right.
Yeah, we got thirty of them, didn't we?
Correct.
And what was the under, uh, item?
The ma- the master part, meaning that, uh, contract that is.
Give me just a minute, I'll try. I can't remember the.
Master part plan was seventy-five. We've got ten thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars in process, but I'm not sure that's a total budget.
That's just today.
Yeah.
That's what you were asking.
Yeah, and then the, the other one, there were six that's in here.
Okay.
There's some of them. Of course, one, right.
Yeah.
So thirty-five.
Yeah.
Fifty thousand.
Yes. Yes, I got that now finally.
It was what, ninety-six?
Fifty thousand.
Fifty thousand.
For Park's master plan, the budget.
Yours was fifty thousand.
Yeah, for the master plan.
We spent.
Originally, as I recall, it was higher, but we did a lot of survey work, it got probably down by twenty thousand.
Correct.
So it was, and then.
Right, you've got two steps you're doing right now. The first step is about twenty-five thousand, which is your engaging phase, which is all their background research, the meetings that we're doing. And we'll do this at the end of this week. And then the second phase is where they sit down by themselves and really create a plan to give us, which is another twenty-five thousand basically.
So it could be up to fifty thousand.
We anticipate fifty thousand dollars. That's what they're, they can build to.
And when you get down to number ten, my question is going to be EDP two thousand seventeen contribution by the city. What's our total contribution at EDP?
That was a hundred and, uh, seventy-five.
Seventy-five. And then it includes.
Hundred seventy-five thousand.
And that includes what?
That includes everything, right?
That's it.
All right, this.
Right. Forty, it was a one time. Forty is a one time.
Correct. But it still, it's a hundred and seventy-five this time around, right?
But, but, but again, the, the forty thousand.
I know.
Okay, that's a hundred and forty-five, hundred and forty-five, basic preparation, and another thirty or forty. So one eighty-five.
Plus the, plus the strategic plan.
Well, that was an earlier cost that we didn't really.
That's not in this budget, that's already in.
But the one eighty-five would be an answer to somebody's question, what do we contribute to EDP twenty seventeen?
That's correct.
That's awesome.
Thank you. And so, not to pass over lightly, I'd have number nine, actually, continued delivery of service in many, many ways with a limited staff, as I think is a major, continued achievement and challenge with our improvements in technology since you got our wing meters were, were making strides of more efficiently. But it's still a significant, small step. And then, you know, I do think that Mike has been a liberating commissioner of our end in terms of saying we need to raise the level of some EDP and our joint effectiveness there. We've gone through your process essentially to get to where we are now with a more straight lines, effective order, and a plan, priorities to have greater success. Initiated, but we're excited about that.
Going back to number nine, I've always wondered, when we compare ourselves to certain cities like Murray and others, wondering how our payroll costs compare. To me, it seems like we did more with less personnel-wise than most places I've come across or heard about or talked to. So I, I know you don't know the answer to that, but that's just something I, I would like to, I could do that myself, research that. I think, I think we'd be surprised.
Even the budgets are, staff, or salaries compare?
Yeah, particularly the number of people.
Something that's intangible, too, and I, and I know I'm biased, so this comment comes from a very biased place, but in my line of work, I travel the state quite a bit. And I go into a lot of different places and city halls and courthouses. And I, I, every time when I travel outside, I'm struck by the, not only the professionalism, the aesthetics, and the quality of what is, what occurs if you go to City Hall. I think it's striking, honestly, when you, when you see other places in the state. And that's not meant to be disparaging the other places, it's meant to be just, I think, a compliment to what does happen in City Hall.
And, and I'm, I'm, I'm a vast supporter of this community, obviously. But if I have a knock, it, it is this. We do more with less. We accomplish more than most. And it never seems to be enough. Give you a case in point. Ron and I were down in Lebanon Monday. They're building a new city hall. Take a drive and go and see it. And so I asked, I asked the city manager down there, John Thomas, I said, how much heat have you taken for that, that palace? He said, none. He said, you're kidding? Surely. He said, no, none. I said, well, we built Paris Woods eight years ago, ten years ago, and people are still talking about it. There's what I'm talking about right there. That's what I'm talking about. That's our exam. Now, why do we, Ken, just a minute ago, leaned over and he said, people still hitting him up about the park.
Whisper, whisper.
Yeah.
How do we? You know what my answer to that is, don't you? Ricky and I are outsiders, newcomers. So you do, they need forms to connect you, so.
So I, I don't have nature that, but if I, if I could, if I could borrow that and put it in the water system, it'd be.
Let me give you a flip side of that. What, I understand how those types of conversations can get old and discouraging. But the flip side of that, or the actual perspective is this, is that you have an engaged community that is concerned, and they're, they watch things carefully. Now, they may not, they're not going to know the intricate facts to the level that you do, because that's what you're charged to do. But the positive is that you do have a community that is terribly engaged, which is a positive. And some communities don't have, but because, it's like competitive basketball. People are going to slam John Calipari because he doesn't play his zone. But yet they've been to how many Final Fours last eight years? Well, I mean, so it's a price of beating on top, I would say. You're going to get knocked.
And, and the other thing, Stephen, almost same lines is that I hear from the same twenty-five to sixty people over and over again. And I just assume that it's, it's wrong for me to assume, but the Georgia people just tell me, I'm pretty pleased with what's going on. You know, when you get letters from kids about that park out there, that to me was a positive reason for being around here. When I go to talk to the fifth representative Rogers, and they ask me questions about city government and stuff, that's a positive reason for doing what we do, but, because you're right, we, we didn't hear a lot of stuff. But I, I've just been okay because it's the same people over and over again, and I can deal with them, but you have to go along.
And a lot of times, they don't wrap up the facts.
No, they're.
And most of the time, if you engage with that person and say, well, here's the real story, or here are the details. A lot of times, they will say, oh, okay.
I didn't.
I didn't know that. So it, it, it does get tiring, and, and even my husband, you know, corrects people all the time.
Ron, that's why this will be so complimentary.
Yes, and that, and this, that's why this is important. And you know, we, we got complaints about the last one that he sent out.
Yep.
What was that?
What was the nature of the fight?
Just, like, typos.
Well, there, yeah, that, and, and the wa- you know, it explained the water bill.
I didn't even know.
And, you know, we don't know what that brought. Um, so, you know, but, but trying to keep people informed that, you know, we, we have to, we have to keep them informed with facts. And that is very burdensome and tiresome, so.
Well, the effort is to improve communications and provide information with that. Most people make a reasonable conclusion. Uh, the other big thing, I'll say that we're on the brink of beginning, and there's our twenty million dollar, uh, twenty million dollar improvement in our water supply to industrial foundation park as well as Perryville. And I guess our old rate reductions and state water approval beginning process. And we'll begin after the first of the year resident, early there, as we thought.
Yeah. Our goal would be to advertise in January for sure, which is okay. I mean, that still puts us on our, our schedule.
But that's a huge improvement.
Massive.
For our industrial prospects and to improve the water supply at Perryville, which has been critical of some people there in terms of the existing supply.
And there's wholesale suppliers that have engaged us. You know, we, we had lunch with, last week with a wholesale purchaser that's just anxiously awaiting the, the tower construction, knowing that that's going to free them up to do, to buy water and to, to do some things they have programmed in their schedule. Right? So it's, there's pressure not just on, on internally to get that done.
I think that's another key point, though, when people ask how the city supports economic development, is that basic infrastructure that is a significant piece outside of the contribution to the partnership. It's those type of infrastructure improvements that are critical.
Well, you know, when you, when you talk about that, when you talk, that water project is a good example of what people will not understand. Because when that tower is built, the tower imperable now is the, this, when you're replacing is the Stampede. It's on the, on the west east end. It's old, ready to go. When that new tower gets constructed, it's probably going to be bigger or as big as the Fourth Street tank. And it's not going to make a lot of sense where it's at. Right? Like you're, so you're going to look at it out in the middle of farmland, and you're going to think, wow, the world's a big tower out, out here. And they're going to compare it to the Blue Tank on one twenty-seven when you go to the Stampede, because it's on one twenty-seven. And they're going to see the tank it's replacing, but when you consider that you have potentially three wholesale purchasers that will draw from that tank in addition to the demands, fire flow demands, and, and the existing deficit that is west of Bluegrass Pike, then when you start to add that up, it, it's undersized, probably. You could make it bigger than what's proposed. It's proposed to be seven hundred and fifty thousand gallons. It could easily be a million gallons. Right? So, I mean, it's, you know, it's, most people won't, won't be able to capture that when they see it sitting there.
I think Ron said it best earlier, there are such high expectations for the and, and by the residents. And a lot of what I, I say to people is, you know, our population may be thirty thousand. be thirty thousand countywide, but our draw, what's our draw, Joe, I mean, hundred thousand?
Hundred and five, up to hundred and ten originally.
Yes.
If you think of the workforce in thirteen counties, which goes into the head of faith, and sixty-six percent community member that, we just reinforce that to add kid staff closing on the building today, and so, we've got to go far and wide.
So, we have to operate like we are a one hundred thousand population.
And please let me give praise where praise is due. I keep track of all my competitors in state and out of state, and in particular, I've been watching what's happening in my hometown community of Murray, which much larger college, but there's a heck of a lot of similarities, but can you imagine that for the last county formed eighteen twenty-two, they just established the first payroll tax for the city of Murray only, for one percent, and, and in this environment politically that we have in other countries, that there's blood on the floor, the county still does not have a payroll tax. So, you've made the decisions to invest, and I realize that increases to payroll taxes can be controversial, but you've already made the investments and the decisions that will pay off in the long term, but in Murray's very competitive, it's at the end of the road, but the fact is, is that they've been able to be competitive in light of not having a payroll tax, and so, just looking at those communities that we're also competing against for projects, I'm amazed that we've made the good decisions now, and yes, expectations are great, Lord knows of all the people that's received criticism, understand that good enough is not good enough for this community, and so, we just know that we play it, I understand we're playing it the other way here, using the term that you always use, but man alive, we're not dealing with those types of situations. Can you imagine functioning with this community solely on property tax?
Is that how Murray does it?
Property tax, a tag, a car tag, everyone who works in, including the students, which is not popular, you have to pay for a car tag, which is a sticker, a city sticker for dollars, on your windshield, and you pay fifty bucks, I believe.
Annually?
Annually, to put a sticker on your car.
Even if you tell them that it's fair.
And that's, that's being, that is being taken down in property tax, it drops just a tad. So, let me tell you, when people are struggling or other communities are struggling, much worse scenarios than, than we are, we'll look on the bright side, and Stephen always does, and I appreciate that, but man alive, I know that, that was a solution, a partial solution that Ron suggested, everything has to be on the table, but man, we're not dealing with those issues. I know the community, we made the decisions a long time ago.
How do they function?
They had a higher taxes in other areas, particularly property insurance premium, insurance error. And the city sticker.
But you said those stickers were for someone that works there?
Works in, and, right, your car is parked in the city of Murray as a worker, student, what have you, you're paying a fifty dollar city sticker yearly on your, to stick on your windshield.
That's, that's still your, I mean, that, that property tax has to be on the border of New York City, set to be.
No, it, it's not, it's higher than ours.
They have higher alcohol fees.
Oh, yes.
Eight percent.
I shared with you that they, they shot for ten originally, but I think they dropped to eight.
So, essentially, even though they haven't had.
All those Murray states.
Payroll taxes, they might probably have a higher cost of living even though they haven't had them.
Well, every, every community struggles with the right mix of taxation to meet their needs, and some maybe have struggled with it sooner than others, but it's a struggle for all communities, and points to the fact that cities as municipal corporations really don't have much revenue flex bill being granted by the state, and that's going to be an issue, you know, probably has to be in terms of cities continuing to drive the state's economy, and what that will turn out to be, and this general assembly remains to be seen, if they get past pension reform early in the section, get into comprehensive tax reform, I believe at that time, they will take up the issue of restaurant tax or other potential sales tax issues for cities, and so, that's going to be part of the second, part of this management council. And we're going to talk a little bit more about that.
We will.
Ron, before we leave these, these people though, I underline the last sentence in each of the ten major components, and I want to commend the author just because they all tend in on a very positive note that deals a strong, makes a strong statement to the community, and then the word note standard, that last statement is that our goal is to be of service to you, referring to all of our citizens, so I want to commend you, somebody put a writing to this, because each of those eleven things there, you know, something very positive to our community.
Thank you, that's the effort of our staff collectively, and we appreciate that, but we, our goal is to be of service, and to be of service, we asked, again, in this upcoming survey, how are we doing, and what are your thoughts in terms of what's important in this community? We did this national citizen survey by mail two years ago, maybe, oh, don't forget it, so while some communities, like Baltimore, we do it every year, just compare trends and how citizens view expenditures and what they're doing, but periodically, we need to do it. This time, in terms of being more efficient in doing it, we decided to do a web-based survey instead of a mail-out, and all citizens will be eligible to respond, it's going to be available beginning early in December, and we have a post at the ending date, but I'll say suggest that we don't say it's going to close in order to continue to get people in, but probably will close in, in late January, and they will compile the results independently and provide them to the city as a snapshot or measure of what our citizens think of how we're doing. I want to have a personnel consultant say it's not important to say, "How are you doing?" It's rather like, "How am I doing?", and this is our collective camp to say, "How are we doing?", and what's important, what do you add? And we did this last time around, it's the standardized national citizen survey that was approved by the International City Management, City and County Management Association, and the National League of Cities, the only survey that they endorse being done, and has been running hundreds, thousands of communities in recent years, and there are the abilities to favor some individual questions at the end of the standardized questions. Particularly last time, Jennifer, we asked a question about the importance of sidewalks connecting neighborhoods to the downtown area, and as I recall, about seventy, over seventy percent of people said that was very important to do that, and that was sort of a impetus for us to increase our sidewalk construction budget, which we've done in two successive years, and so, it's valuable, and I think it also connects the citizens with the city in terms of, just take a moment, you know, you get water every morning, you know, you get parks, you know, you have safety in your community and in your neighborhoods, and it's, it's very valuable to do. This will cost us about sixty-five hundred dollars, which is a modest cost for this.
I think.
Should we be using our, this is just a marketing question, should we be using the slightly bold?
We've talked about that in terms of on our webpage and that discussion.
I love that conversation.
Yeah, that's going to be an outcome of this discussion.
Looks like it needs to be uniformed to me.
It's not inconsistent with our city of first, you know, slogan, I thought, and later I had a wonderful conversation about even on our, this, and we could hang a little lawyer tag on the block and says it's always old or incorporated somewhere in the implement itself or some other ways, but it's, I think it'd be good.
Yeah, I'd be happy to talk about adaptive uses. If you remember, we didn't really push the logo on you guys, because we didn't want it to be, people get so caught up in the processes of how the logo looks like, and you kind of, you miss the whole point.
The story.
So, you know, I, I mentioned this last week when I talked to you guys, I think you've captured the story, and our messaging is very together and singing from the same hymnal across the board, and I think that's important, but I, I would love to get the visual aspects more and more incorporated to it.
Well, I mean, even if it is a little, you know, just darkly bold, or a, you know, tagging to you, you know, somewhere, I just think it shows we're all on the same page and.
There's a lot of easy things we could do.
Maybe we just stick it in there somewhere. I think that would be important.
I think happy to help on this, however.
I just think it would show, you know, that we're all fighting and working together.
Another question, if the city may do this, I don't know, when I'm talking about that survey and getting to the citizens, does the city keep any type of, or request, or allow people to submit an email address on file for communication? And the only reason I'm asking that is that, like, it's my favorite water bill, and so, would you like to share an email with us? You know how anytime you check out anywhere, the driver's asking, "Would you like to share an email address with us?" Does the city have something like that? Or, I'm just thinking a potential use is to zip out a survey like this, a lot of times, after you have any type of service to form, you always get an email that says, "Thanks for your business, if you'd like to fill out a survey, here it is." I get an email sometimes, depending on where I am, if I'm waiting in line somewhere, I may click on it to do a survey.
Yeah.
But I probably wouldn't go to their website to do a survey without an email with a link in it.
That'd be problematic. You guys aren't doing this digitally, are you?
We, we have several things of that nature. One is email lists that anybody can request minutes, and the attendants within the city should be.
It may be good though.
They can do the notification.
Email matters sometimes, if you're to collect, to get the survey out, you might get a better response, I'm only saying if you would provide a link to through an email.
That's a good thought, I mean, we'd probably do that.
I'd like to give accolades to our fire chief and our police chief, we were talking about our damble fighting above its weight, and that's a term they picked up during some of the earlier things, but in separate public forums, they were able to disseminate information to our public about, we're not just dealing with a population of seventeen thousand here, you guys did a very good job of that, and I think we received well, and so, part of this conversation, people don't understand, we're dealing with seventy thousand, not a day in Texas.
And, and I use that, not to dwell on this, but I use our restaurants as examples. We've just got a new restaurant, a new steakhouse. Local people can't get in. You know why? It's Casey County, it's Garrett County, it's Mercer County, it's Lincoln County, you know, and, and so, all those people coming to our restaurants and our, you know, the, these restaurants come in and put their smallest footprints here based on the population, but this draw is a hundred thousand, so we could theoretically could support their larger footprints, but they, I, I guess they're, they don't go by that necessarily, they, they're, they're formed by the population, but our draw is a hundred thousand.
That's, not to stir the pot, but that's an interesting example for restaurant taxes as well, so you have all these people coming in from outside using roads and services, and, and this way, you would act, much like, where you would capture reinvestment back into the community with the restaurant tax.
Could you say that better?
I know. Absolutely, and I mean, that's the, that's the, and they're not going to stop coming and caddling because of the three percent. If there's evidence that shows that that does not happen.
And if you look at the police water or the records, those people who are on Stanford Liberty, Arizona, you know, I'd say seventy percent of everything you read, most people don't live here, whether it's arrests, accidents, whatever, most of those are listed outside of our community.
I suppose these two did a very good job.
Absolutely.
Telling people that they're responding to, a lot of people in situations don't always involve oil companies.
And, and with the nine-one-one services, you know, it's not just for our citizens that live here, it's anyone who has an emergency inside our city or county, and there are a lot that live outside of the city or county, and believe me, I know what it's like to be outside of your state even, to have an emergency, and you, you know, you have to depend on strangers, so, you know, that's, you, you all, both of you all did very, expressing that, you know, and, and that's the, that's the message that I try to get out, is, okay, here's our sixty-six percent workforce that live outside, here's our restaurant people that live outside, and so, those people are on our roads and, and unfortunately, sometimes have to use our emergency services, so.
And it's a good thing, obviously, to you.
It's a good thing.
And we want greater sports tourism in our park system, and that might be an outcome of our national park study, so that's, that's above the challenge and a good thing.
When we talk about development too, and I've talked about this at length with Ron, maybe one or two times with you guys, but to remind us all that our biggest problem, which people talk about, our damble's hard to, hard to do business in, is partly because we're, we're perceived as a small town, but we do have structure, we have planning and zoning, you have structure, in the same way, our structure is much less restrictive than Nicholasville or Lexington or other places, but everybody says, "Well, it's much easier to do this in Lexington," well, the reason is, is because when you go to Lexington, you have the expectation that you're going to run into that obstacle, but when you come to Damble, you think you can just make a couple calls, maybe things work out, it's good, but it's the same, it's, it's actually less restrictive, so that perception is part of your problem with why people say stuff like that.
A lot of small towns.
They don't think about it.
Small town mentalities.
Yep.
Mr. City Manager, before I, I want to take my first time out for the morning, but before I do that, it, it strikes me that of the ten things here, most of all of them, I would consider investments rather than just expenditures, I mean, or economic development and public safety, most all of them are investments if we see the need. With that.
Call the board recess.
Official timeout.
Let's, let's move on, folks, but we've got a lot of ground to cover.
We do.
In a short period of time.
And I think in a short period of time, a lot of what we will cover, really in the next thirty minutes, will be just status reports, projects already approved and in process, so we shouldn't probably have a lot of conversation on those, that's where we are. Earl, will you begin those conversations under item three?
Sure thing. The master parks, planning, effort, I'd describe that briefly, they're doing evaluate and engage, that's the two words that, that really describe their efforts so far, and that will, will conclude in the next couple of weeks, and then they'll move into what they, they characterize as envision and plan, which is the envision part, they will, that will have a lot of input from, from us again, local folks, then the planning really is, is really them creating a document for us to work from, whatever that takes shape and form of. Wayfinding, we expect to have, we've called our public meetings Steering Committee meetings, partly because we've not really set up a specific steering committee, we're allowing the community as a whole to participate in the process, I think the consultant's done a good job engaging the community at those events, I think all of his meetings have been interactive with the folks that have attended, and I think that, that has been well thought out by him. We expect to have one more Steering Committee meeting, we expect that to occur in December, and then he will most likely have a document completed sometime in January.
On that point, Earl, we had said at one of the earlier meetings, that we would have that meeting the first few weeks of December, if it were to happen in December.
Correct, right.
We've got to get that scheduled.
Yes. Yeah, I was thinking, when, when we were talking last week, it was before Thanksgiving, things got kind of hectic, we were thinking that week after that commission meeting, so that we'd have another opportunity to announce it at, at the commission meeting like we have been doing, but we'll follow up, make sure that gets scheduled. The fire station, that one is more complicated to provide a schedule, we would say that the next phase or the next decision point, we expect should, should be here by the end of December really, or the first week of January, somewhere in that timeframe. We, we've had conversations this week with different entities tied that, that will aid in that, that process, and without really being able to get too far into it, that's really where we expect to, for you guys to provide us direction by the end of December, first week in January, somewhere around that time period.
We're really talking about early in January.
Correct, we're guessing.
Probably around December.
Us being prepared to ask for direction by then is what we would expect. The Wizard Park, we're, we're continuing to do work, one of the things, we've had that little test strip of lights up there for about ever, and it took forever to get them in, we tried to come up with a different design, really, nothing was, was really economical, so we, the, those, the remaining lights, the assembly that's going to be up there should be here, supposed to be here this week, actually, we've got an email a week and a half ago, said this is the delivery period board, we expect that to be when it gets here within a couple of days, so, you know, maybe even by this weekend, you could have the. So, you know, maybe even by this weekend, you could have the remaining light bar assembled or build next week, in the next week. The, uh, then we'll do some more detailing on that, that ornamental structure so that that doesn't look so. Now, once the lights pick up, we'll put on some panels and really make that more ornamental as architect intended. Those are already, there's in storage, we've had those, those are photon items and enhance.
Enhance the what?
The water current.
Metal structure.
The metal structure. There's bolt-on pieces that we've not put on yet strictly because they're, to put them on, then the light bar can't be put on.
Just the water is good as it's going to get pretty much.
We've talked about, since, since we talked last, we, we've tried to come up with different nozzle systems, different things like that. We are trying to figure out if we can upsize the pumps. I, I don't know. But the, the biggest problem you have is that it's, uh, the, the water, it just comes out clear because it comes out laminar. It's not meant to be frothy. And, and then the other biggest obstacle is the perception versus really what it is. It is what it was designed to be, but it doesn't look like the picture that was provided.
Right.
Right? And so I think we'll, we'll be forever, um.
Well, I mean.
Trying to overcome that. It just looked very, very robust.
Looked like a waterfall.
Looked like a waterfall, but very robust in the, uh, in the, in the rendering, just like Fountain in the corner did. Right?
Are we pursuing any negotiated ends to that or claim for the fountain bowl at the corner?
For the design of it?
Yes.
Not necessarily yet, but they've not either been released from, from the design per se yet either.
I just think before that project closes, there needs to be some reconciliation of that on our end from the legal perspective. And if there should be some remediation of that issue.
Right.
I just want to keep that on the forefront because we don't want to close that project without that being resolved. Because there's potentially a redesign that.
There, there's been acknowledgement of that maybe necessary, right? And they've not avoided that.
Right.
Obligation, uh, at least not yet. And, but we have also been making an effort to enhance that and try to get to a point where what is theirs is adequate. And, and we did wait till the flag posts are in, so, and we did, we did make some changes to it ourselves.
And they asked for that. In my mind, the fixes that have been made seem somewhat temporary.
Right.
And not enduring. And so, and not what the city bargained for. So with those in mind, I think there needs to be some, when we wrap that project up, some settlement of that issue.
Yeah.
Are we pursuing any type of shade or coverings or stage or any, anywhere?
We've been, we've done a lot of research on those. We do want to in the spring try to get into, uh, setting some type of, of mesh system up that will provide some temporary shade. And, and it most likely would be, uh, take up, put down probably during events. Some of them you may leave up. Most of them, there, there are quite a few options exist that require bolting into concrete and doing some things like that. What we've tried to do is come up with a system that may not require that. And so we've, we've done quite a bit of work on it, but our goal is to do something before spring, really summer hits so that you've got something in place by then.
I mean, we can just use like those canvas type.
Yeah, there, there's a lot of those on the market now, right? And some of them are not cheap either.
And tables?
There's more benches where, um.
We have.
Picknick tables?
We, we have taught, we have not ordered any picnic tables yet, if that's something that we need to do. We have, we've ordered some additional benches.
And, and I know this is a small thing, I know this is where I picked it up, but it makes sense to me. I was talking to somebody who's in the park design. He was in Lexington and, um, they don't do benches, they do chairs. I said, why? He said, because when you have a chair, you can move it and there's a spirit of freedom when you can move that chair. When you sit on the bench, it's bolted down and it, the sun's in your face, the sun is in your face and there's nothing you can do. My question to them was, and I believe that it was Triangle Park, my question to them was, okay, how many get lost? Answer, zero. Just saying, avoid you can bolt down benches.
Whether maybe areas for bolt, you may have some.
I think if we, I think it's more inviting if you have, you know, two chairs and a table or picnic tables or those like high top tables with some sort of stool, things like that. I, you know, on a beautiful day, even if it's a cool day like today, that place could be full at lunch.
That's the goal. I mean, that's what we'd like to see, yeah.
So how do you want to get a conclusion on that? Do you want something brought back before the city commission? Do you want the education committee to consider something like that? Or how do you want to come to some conclusion within the budget limitation?
I think we're smart enough as a commission to handle.
Sure. And just talk back. Administrator can bring it for you and say, this is.
I'm sorry.
The, the light, planes of lights, do we all go across the board for them?
Yes, sir.
Because that little strip there.
Yeah, that was, that was a trial.
You can make it all blue, right? For animals?
I'm going to make it blue if they were up there this weekend. Late Saturday night after everybody else had turned it gold.
I've been trying to get a tone and make it correct, make it blue perfectly.
Friday is going to be gold, Saturday's.
Yes, Friday night, Saturday, yeah, Friday night. After the game, but switch to blue and say blue.
What about our streetscape improvements, street improvements?
The, uh, streetscape, the replace second street bridge, we've, we've got an RFP draft done, we'll issue that. Hopefully with Christmas, we'll think about that a little bit, but we'll probably publish that this month and then collect them uh, the first week in January, something like that probably. Streetscape fifth to fourth. The thing that is holding up the, the, uh, moving forward to that is your street lighting. The approval of the, the, uh, your overhead lights, the pattern of those. What was demonstrated up there on third street was the plans and specs, all those things were approved long before the street lighting. The, the lighting standards have been altered over the last few years. And, um, the transportation cabinet is scrutinizing those significantly more. It took about a year to get the streetlights after being moved around two or three different times, uh, on the third street project. It took about a year to get that approved. We don't think that's going to happen on this one. We think we're way farther along already. But that is the last element to get approval from the transportation. Once they do that, we'll be in a position to, to advertise that project for bids as far as we know. That is from, that is Main Street from fifth up to fourth. Which is funded with partly with a two hundred fifty thousand dollar grant allocation, uh, and then the remaining balance is local funds. The, uh, uh, streetscape grant, we did submit another grant from, uh, Main Street from fourth down to second. That has been submitted, we have not heard back yet. What we would recommend though is, uh, once we are in a position to advertise the Main Street portion that I just described, fifth, fourth, then we need to really sit down and decide how you want to do the rest of it and try to figure out if we will have heard hopefully by the end the status of the grants, the middle that we made. And then, uh, just decide what's the next elements, what's the next phase, what's our next grants middle after this one? And really we'll, we'll start to sit down and work on that once we get permission to bid this fifth, fourth section.
So fifth and fourth on the south side?
No, both sides, Main Street, Main Street from fifth street to fourth street, on both sides of Main Street.
Because I'm, I'm just doing this from memory and so that's, that includes in front of city hall and all of them.
Yes.
So, so most of that.
Something's done already.
Already is done and then Center College made the sidewalk to match.
Correct, right.
So really it would only be from city hall to four?
It's both, both sides of the street.
Okay.
Right, it's both sides.
I don't know if it's time to bring this up or not, but.
Do it need.
As we do that, what are we going to do about the trees? We just going to let people cut them down on these, so they don't like them or, uh, we have a more long-term?
The streetscape plan, uh, did include, the master plan did include, uh, that subject as, as far as where new trees go, what the tree wells need to look like. And that would eventually roll into whatever you're, you actually do for construction. We had not necessarily, uh, uh, anticipated removal of trees in front of the streetscape plan per se.
Right, right. But, but that is something.
That is a piece of that plan, right.
Maybe a different type of tree?
Different type of tree, yeah, there was.
Sort of speaking tree.
The, the idea behind the, well, one of the things that the streetscape master plan did is, is really do the delineation between the street zone. For example, when you parallel park, you open your door into a bush, running it out. Yeah, the, the master plan really tries to consider that. And so you see a reduction of that curbside space really for planting. And it becomes more of an urban section between those two blocks where the, where the trees, the fowl trees are. And, and so from fourth down to second, you really see a more urbanized section with, uh, less bushes, less space for those types of things. So there's a reduction in quantity of trees in that plan.
And then.
In that block, in those two blocks.
We need to take this into consideration, uh, with the firehouse design also on the streetscape. We don't want to do that sidewalk and then have to tear it up. So that, we'll make sure that's done after or at the same time.
Yeah, we would anticipate that during construction. So depending on what you actually did first and then, then you would manage that around what you know.
So I can help answer or relay the information to the public. The second street bridge replacement has to do with the weight of the fire trucks. So something on the south side of the second street bridge, you probably couldn't get through there from Main Street. Why can't we get, I'm asking you Ken, why can't we use the fire truck from bypass to, to get to that area? What's the answer to that question?
How we get there?
Pardon me?
How, how we get there? We just navigate around through, uh, second and third, coming back, back around on the other side. And it's, and it's more than just fire trucks, anything over eighteen tons. So if you're looking at a delivery there of services also, yes, the fire truck was arguably concerned, but anything over eighteen tons.
The biggest part of the confusion of traffic in downtown flow and, and all those things is just that you have Clark's Run there. And most people, it's easy to see the railroad tracks because you're going across the by道 and you can see that the expansive. But Clark's Run is at the same impressive obstacle to getting south. You can't, there's, right now, you only have one effective way to get south of downtown that's effective, which that is on fourth street. Right, so we, it is important. And what, one of the things we have done is when we took the state study, the common, I took the state study. We went through what the bridge was, we talked to different, a few different contractors about making, making a repair that really didn't change the structural capacity of the bridge. We looked at that, it's really not an economical thing to do. And so given your restrictions of transportation, um, we, we went more the RFP route. We're really, we anticipate taking the whole top of that bridge off rather than just do a repair and then do, uh, probably precast structure so that happens quick. Uh, so it doesn't take, you know, just weeks and weeks and weeks to build something on site or concrete on site. We'll do something precast so that your downtime is, is less. But it, it, it hopefully is, we can get something rated higher. The problem with getting a higher rating will be your ends. And so we would have to get destructive on the ends of the road, which that would add a lot of time to the repair. So there's a balance point. Can't just guarantee you can go to forty tons without affecting the ends. Then that may be four months of construction. What's the economic cost of four months of not having that road? And it may be that you end up at thirty tons versus forty tons as a result of trying to balance all that out so that it's a reasonable project, cost and, and time, right? So we'll, we will go through that process once we issue the RFP, which is, we, we did the evaluation based on what the state gave us. Then we're now, we're going to do the RFP and we're doing that hopefully this month we'll issue it.
We also have, like, just looking at all that, what Earl was talking about, but as many special events that we have, if you block off fourth street, second street is the only north-south connection.
Oh, makes really good sense. It's going to be great for us with the trail system to rename that park down there and have a new bridge. We can really put a focus on getting that trail. Yeah, in that park.
Second street, it's a big intersection. I mean, it takes a lot of time. So we have fourth, fourth and third one-way streets. You know, if you don't, if you got to have one of those, it's either second street or fourth and third.
When are our special events typically being, uh, is it May or June or?
Yeah, it's all April.
April. Thank you. I think we may have already covered a lot of issues, but someone has some additional points they want to raise on that portion. And if not, in the interest of time, can we move on?
Water plant park, we have advertised that. We hope to, or we anticipate receiving bids twelve, twelve, uh, and then moving into construction. That, that you'll end up as a result of the scheduling, you'll end up with, uh, hopefully then on the agenda on the first meeting in January if we get good bids. Stormwater projects, those are all underway. We, we've got some preliminary designs and concepts and calls on the Main Street portion. We've not sat down and talked about that with the city manager yet, we'll do that soon. The GIS work that they're doing, we're excited about. We, we hope to go live with that in the next few weeks, hopefully quietly. I'd, I'd like to have that on the agenda, so I can't really commit to that yet because it's not under our control completely. But we'd like to do a demonstration for you that evening in December, but we don't know if that'll happen yet. The mini basin, we, we are working on Streamland, they've done quite a bit of background research there. We've been trying to schedule, uh, a meeting with that neighborhood. We expect Miller to go out, that'll happen soon. The, that should happen in really the first couple of weeks of January. We'll try to get some notice out, um, and give folks a little bit of warning there.
What will that be for?
Uh, stormwater improvements, uh, do the same, uh, water quality, water quantity analysis that they've done, that we've done in different basins before.
Is that designed to solve flooding issues?
No, that, that's the misunderstood part. And, 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 and it is, it is designed to do two things. One, may identify structural flooding, identify, uh, capital infrastructure failure. And then also to identify, uh, water quality issues that can be enhanced or eliminated or reduced as a result of something we can do, right? So it's really got those three things that you're really doing. A lot of the flooding in Streamland, uh, is, can be considered nuisance flooding now because the city had spent quite a bit of money there years ago. So it's a really, it's a little different approach than, than like on the south side where, where the McKinley street watershed was done. And then it's unique like the, uh, uh, Parable Road watershed when it was done because you have so much infrastructure there in place and, and the way of retention basins and ponds and things that was, the city participated in already. And so it was, it's just a, it's unique because when Streamland was put in, we didn't do retention basins, we just did culvert replacements. And so we don't anticipate as many, uh, structural issues per se. But is there structural flooding? Can we, how do we eliminate that? What is the nuisance flooding? Can that be managed better? What's the water quality impacts of those things? Farm runoff, um, for example, nutrient control, what, in what way can we contribute to managing that? Hopefully that. That's really the bulk of what you have going on in stormwater utility. The energy efficiency improvements is underway. You see new lights at city hall, for example, it's HVAC system. They've done a lot of work in mechanical room, they'll continue to do that. A lot of that stuff you really can't see. The, uh, we've taken possession of quite a few meters. That, that process is, is getting ready to start. We, we are working on the fixed base station today. That should, uh, be live, uh, the end of this week. The contractor will show up next, uh, week, I think, to do the installation of a hundred grand of meters around town. They'll do, then they'll, they'll energize the fixed base system. They'll start to monitor that through January first, uh, once we get into that new year. Hopefully if everything is trouble shot and synchronized and works right, the week of January the eighth, the meters will start to be changed and built. The, uh, corporate drive, Parable Road waterline, we are submitting. The corporate drive, Parable Road water line, we are submitting to Division of Water, we'll hopefully get that approval this month and then be ready to go forward with that. The water treatment plant is done, we're still going through punch list items, which you would expect that to conclude soon. I don't think there's, you know, more, more than a handful of things left, more, probably one significant thing, which is tied to a chemical control delay, which we're trying to sort out, how, how, how to close the contract out and still fix that. The wastewater system master plan, they're waiting on information from us, but they've done a good job evaluating so far all of our facilities. They've touched all the pump stations, they've looked at all the pumps, they've looked at the electrical stuff. They've completely, uh, completed the evaluation of the wastewater plant. They have developed a project profile for that, we're submitting that for the schedule with Kentucky Infrastructure Authority so that if, when we get to a stopping point with the plan, and if there's a project there, then that's already submitted to them and we're not held up there. So we expect to get a report from them in February, somewhere, somewhere around those timeframes when they finish the collection system evaluation. The, do you have any questions on those? I think that's about it for me right there.
Thank you, Earl.
Can I make a comment about the sugar park?
I'm sorry?
Can I make a comment about the sugar park?
Yes.
Um, I think y'all should be really proud of the design of the park. I, I think it's really well done, I think it has a lot of leadership to take such a crucial part of our downtown and make sure that it looks welcoming. Could you imagine if, if was not what it is? And I, and I realize when we come to the part of buying furniture and shades and we've already spent so much, that's the part that often falls off. But that's the piece that's going to get people to use the park. That's the people, you know, when you drive by, I realize it was a gushing glorious waterfall of a picture, but I didn't anticipate to see a water wall as I drove by. I need to go into the park and sit down and enjoy my lunch, and then I see the beautiful water wall and it's part of the experience. So I, I mean, benches I think are a little boring. I guess my sentiment would be, could we get some funky red furniture that fits together like puzzle pieces that would encourage people to want to go and play a game or have conversation? Something that was conducive for people to sit and actually view music on the stage. That's when I think you're gonna start to hear the negativity, calm down because the park will be so functional. Right now you have this big beautiful space and nobody's hardly ever in it. It's just because it's, it's a little hard to use. I mean, I've been out there when there's concerts and the sun's in my eyes and my kid's super high and, you know, so I, I, my two cents would be don't skimp on this last part because I think it's what's gonna make a big difference. Thanks.
Under our community legal development work, we've got a number of the items listed for discussion. We talk about our support for the remake of the DDP, our, our planning study, our, our budget currently, we've already mentioned every hundred and eighty thousand, forty thousand in nine percent. So I don't know if, if we want to say anything more about that in the present time or not. I mean, revenue is obviously at limited capacity or, or amounts as we go forward into the next year for reasons we'll also get into, and our forty thousand dollar grant, we said was a good kind of grant this past time. So having said that, I guess my view is that we're looking for public private partnership and making that public private partnership succeed going forward. And I, I think the city has been a leader in funding and development ever. So I hope we're successful as a, as a public private partnership to bring that continued operating. Mike had suggested, and I think all the city commissioners have signed up for it, I believe it's December the seventh, Thursday afternoon, bridge is out of poverty and I read the book, there's a training workshop to attune challenges that people living in poverty face. And that should be a good workshop for us. I'm not sure exactly what our community response can be out of that. One thing that did hurt me earlier was that in terms of supporting community agencies, if we really are, are concerned about aiding people in poverty, we need to somehow measure to what degree all of those community agencies that have that mission are aligned with that and that might somehow impact funding. There are, there are community agencies we fund who aren't necessarily funded for that purpose. You know, price stamp, that's for one, being that, but if we are looking to align more effectively our limited dollars with helping people in poverty that to get off, then we might mull over income to stop it functioning, that's it.
Is it time for thirty for that?
Uh, it's not yet, but I think it's gonna be half clean beginning May at one o'clock. Obviously. Twelve thirty one, I'm not sure I received the file, but.
And do we have a book to read before we go?
Uh, supposedly they, that order's all provided now, there is that, you, you've read that book?
No, I've read most of it.
There is a book, so we probably need to circulate that to everybody.
We don't have the location yet.
Uh, not twenty dollars.
Okay, that's all right.
It may be in the library though, I'm not certain of that. You may be thinking of me, I've already attended this, so I don't. So you're going this way and I already have the book, so you don't need to get one for me.
Well, we, so you don't know, we'll get that book ahead.
Uh, I think it, I think they have them, they just charge us the cost of the book, I believe they have them and adequate supply just by giving them to, so we'll try to do that.
I think I'd like to be able to explain something.
I think it'd be helpful if everyone digested the contents of the book. We get, it, it frames, it frames the topic, so it'll all be more productive.
The other item under there, community, even about the work is wire, wireless communication, potential issues not in our current budget. There's a lot of discussion about the state's, you know, initiative to, to have improved connectivity throughout the state and, and that's still progressing apparently, although under delayed schedule. There's discussion in Lexington newspaper about their many studies they have done to promote Google Speed and their expected expenditure, I think, is seventy.
Seventy million?
Million dollars to make that occur. Louisville and Lexington in recent years, since they have, they expended great efforts to try to develop RFQs to get the private sector to see to come, how they could come in and partner with the city or whatever franchise or other arrangements they could arrange to make that happen. It's a slow process and an expensive one apparently. But the thought that I had was that if DABL is interested in having some discussion of that, we could get probably access to their RFQs that they've developed, send it out and see if any private companies are interested in pursuing DABL as a market for that and begin those discussions. I don't think we have at this point the revenue flexibility to fund a great study effort, but that's one thing we at least could put our toe in the water on and see what the response might be in terms of, of potential. Now, the other thing with regard to enhancing areas of our city for faster connectivity. Earl, you might mention our effort at, at our park in terms of our upgrades of energy efficiency there and the necessary connectivity to.
Yeah, because.
To make that management of those energy efficiency happen, we've got to create a system there.
Right. Because we are needing internet access from our systems that we're putting in, we, IT's done a good job with stepping up and trying to figure out a way to get Wi-Fi in the parks differently than we do now. And so we do think we have, Nick and, and those guys do think they, they've come up with a couple of good alternatives so that the park, you wouldn't have isolated pockets of, of Wi-Fi, that you would have general broadcast Wi-Fi in the park. That's our goal. But we do think we can get there. We think we can get there economically as part of our project. So there's a side benefit there that we didn't, that we're realizing. And then, you know, and then once you do that, that opens up your opportunity to do it at Jackson Park, for example, and, and then follow that up with Main Street. Jackson Park would be, the adjacency of Jackson Park would make that almost seamless with Millennium Park. And then, then you would, you, you know, the, the long-term thing is with the goods that we're using here, we think we can use them downtown maybe. And then, right?
Right. And the, the potential for downtown, I mean, there are several issues in terms of the cost of the equipment, management of that to make it continue to operate, and the protection of our police and other city hall systems from encroachment or, or spam or, or just, so we'd have to maintain different systems. But Nick is of the opinion that we could provide those to the park, one, it's just part of our energy efficiency and then easily brought to, to Jackson. And then a second system that we could enhance Wi-Fi technology, at least college, center college down Main Street as an initial investment. It would probably be too difficult to broaden beyond just the Main Street and buildings along that corridor, but that would be an important first step. And that's probably one of the things that would be done at a reasonable cost, I took the number on that. It, it sort of opens the question in terms of, is this, again, and it is, a efficiency management in one part and in the park, it's a economic development investment for people coming to maintain to downtown or to our parks? And is it something the city should provide or, or somehow charged for? We're not thinking of charging in the present time, maybe we'll get to that at some point. I don't know, we have a lot of costs that need to be incurred in doing that. But I, I think it's, it's very encouraging for those areas that have energy, thinking we can do that and put it in real quickly.
So that essentially will be enough of Wi-Fi system?
It wouldn't be a large hot spot or?
And I do know that Covington worked with AT&amp;T. AT&amp;T, I, I don't know if it was in the form of a, of a grant or they just spent it on the equipment or whatever that they got, over a hundred thousand dollars from AT&amp;T on equipment and things like that. And then they got the local property owners to agree for, um, like, equipment on the buildings, just small routers or whatever it is they need to attach those to their properties to, I think most of their downtown has public Wi-Fi. And they also use that interactively with their wayfinding. And also they can track demographics. They are, they can even track the pass-throughs, people that pass through that have their Wi-Fi on, the pass-through that don't connect, they can tell you who's connecting and where. And there's a survey that pops up when you do connect for demographics. You can choose to take that survey or not. But they are also using that as traffic, you know, to track traffic and to track foot traffic. So I think this ties into our wayfinding, which is the question I have asked, is if we have wayfinding kiosks, can we not have an app on that kiosk to say, hey, if you download this app, then you see this on your, you know? I, I just think our wayfinding needs to have some sort of digital aspect to it.
Well, that'd be a future point of analysis, but I'm, I'm excited by the fact that we can and likely will proceed in putting those hotspots as a starting point, and that's good news.
Does it make sense for us to investigate with the Cameron Park in Lexington, not only their RFQ, but also any other, any other ancillary information that we might glean as to how they, other than price, as to how they came to that conclusion of, of vendor?
I'm sure that would be useful and educational, it may be lengthy to some degree in terms of, I think it would be a useful educational effort that would save us a lot of money if I were to learn from that. So I think discussions with Lexington and rural would be useful.
I just think that's an important amenity that cities are starting to offer and that we need to get in on it. As, it's a service.
Well, there's also bigger discussion. Communities like Glasgow who have their own electric plant board or municipal board, they, they already have a platform to install that kind of technology and, and, and charge for it. We don't have that, you know, infrastructure. How do we go about dealing with this? I think, I think Denise is correct. We, we've got to cross this bridge and the sooner we do it, the more competitive we're gonna be. And it's, it's a rather large, rather large gorilla, we've got to start getting our arms around it and find a rassle to ground and figure out, hey, this is how we can do that.
And it's just one more marketing tool.
It's a big one, I'd say.
Even if it's just, you know, four-block area in downtown, that's essentially our downtown, we can say, yeah, we have Wi-Fi, public Wi-Fi downtown.
Well, we've said in our, in our strategic development plan, we've said that we want to start attracting young, young talent, we want to start attracting technology talent. I don't see how in the world we're gonna do that unless we can provide this connectivity.
Well, so many of those develop by virtue of, you know, DABL's just developed differently. You know, Frankfurt established their own plant board, Henderson had their own municipal facilities, Owensboro owns, or Glasgow, a lot of your TDA communities had to build their own local, you know, they're just supplying wholesale to TDA. But my question is, using that same infrastructure, Earl, could you do this through the water system, since we're a regional water supplier? Or is that a no-no?
No, I mean.
Or fiber to be laid alongside your water lines?
Well, it could be laid alongside of them, you know, some of the concepts we were talking about it was, can it be embedded in your sewer system? The Division of Water probably would.
Yeah.
We'd, we'd probably, but you know, Ron knows that, that it's, it's, it's something I've talked about with Ron personally. I mean, I think, you know, I know, I know, I don't live inside the city limits, I know I struggle to get internet access that's economical.
I'm thinking multi-game.
And, and.
With a regional power of water.
Yeah.
So, 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 so we enjoy having our own water treatment facility. We enjoy being able to market that and benefit from a revenue standpoint view with five other counties.
Right.
In a perfect world, I'd like to see us duplicate that with connectivity as opposed to us potentially having to connect on someone else. How many times have you struggled with your cable? You can either be in charge of it or somebody else is gonna be in charge of it. I'm glad we're in charge of our water. I'd like for us to be in charge of our connectivity.
Let me talk about hypothetically what, to expand on what you're saying. You're talking about Frankfurt Plant Board, you're talking about Brea, you're talking about Corbin, Barbado, they have actually, and this is a risk for some identifying this for a couple of reasons, for somewhere down the road, if you've been reading in the industry, Owensboro, Paducah, they formed the Kentucky Municipal Energy Association. They've become a wholesale purchaser of power, they're coming off KU's power grid. They're gonna get their, they're, they're gonna buy power from other entities, not KU. That's going to affect our utility costs, right? We can't participate in that savings because we don't own those utility posts. We allowed KU to, and this is a decision years ago, to be in our community, serving us electricity rather than the city going and doing it. That is a risk, that is a decision for you guys that becomes hard. And I don't, and that's why you are elected and you all hopefully can make those decisions better than us. But I mean, to your point, it is, it is challenged to identify when you need to do that. What's the right time to do, is this something we need to do or is this something we need to just let it happen over time? And it just. And it just, you know, that's a judgment call you guys have to make, yeah.
Because we do not have the distribution network of our electric utilities like Frankfurt or others, it's a bigger challenge for us. Now, we've talked about, I think, in years past, an idea that was generated by an English company and put in place in England and in other communities in this country that are all referred to in terms of, we do have sewer systems and they have patented fiber optic system, they run very quickly and efficiently effectively. There's sewer systems where you can become Google wired and much lower cost, whether the part of water or sewer or whatever would prove that might yet be known. But the technology has proven its patent and their, our company, that company would significantly partner with the city to do that, we might get some revenue if that were to be a possibility. And the discussion that I had probably four years ago on that, they were saying that, you know, you run it damage at a pole sack or whatever, you have low frequency broadcast station set up there, you basically get everybody to go to stick wired pretty effectively within a urban area that doesn't address the rural parts of this county or other. But that might be a possibility, depending upon complications. I mean, you obviously have potential of that fiber optic being damaged or otherwise need to make this a repair, but apparently it is viable.
Let me, let me just go at it this way. Can we make this a priority study in 2018? Come up with some, some method or series of methods to position this community at four of connectivity? And I think being in control of that, like the water system, or to use your other analogy with other communities now buying power wholesale from other electrical companies which we don't have, for us to be able to have control of our connectivity, I think is going to be in the future as important as having control of your own water and your own electricity.
That's a question and a good one, and I don't know that we have the answer to that. I think it's clear that we can and likely will do the mobile hotspot as a necessary component to energy efficiency and incremental improvement areas of our community, but that is a pretty large undertaking to do, and it requires money and expertise and time to do it. I don't know if we have that in our IT staff necessarily in terms of the ability to yield the results that requires the study. I'll tell you, and you may know this, that Russellville is the only Google speed community in Kentucky turn-up. They have their utility system, their manager who came from Tennessee ten or fifteen years ago, because the cable television company would provide speed adequate for high-definition television, Russellville at that time said, we're going to get into business of providing connectivity, and they spent over ten million dollars adding on to their network in that small community to add Google speed to neighborhoods.
And I see no reason why we shouldn't consider going down the same path.
And with the exception, we don't have a utility that had an interest too. But that doesn't mean we can't necessarily get there.
Well, since we don't have staff, and I understand that, there's got to be resources out there that we can contract with to give us, to give us various alternatives.
Yes, I have a suggestion, maybe we could begin that discussion by looking at our RFQs in terms of what our communities have done. You'll remember, it wasn't too long ago, Lexington talked about their, what, thirty-eight-thousand-dollar study or whatever, that they determined the results were too expensive to implement. I don't know how they got from that point, so they're, they're, they're-
Exactly.
Seventy million dollar-
Exactly, exactly. And that, and that, and that came out in June, that was a Herald-Leader article in June.
So there's two sets, and a no, and then they're, they're-
Right, so yeah, what happened, that's, that's, that's what we're going to know.
It's obviously the future now or each way.
Yeah, I definitely, and to entice our younger generations and workforce, you know, we are slaves to technology. What happens when your Wi-Fi goes down? Or internet? We're stuck.
So at least we've identified this as a high priority.
I think it, I think it definitely should be a problem.
Yeah, I mean, if we can spend fifty thousand dollars for a consultant on our park system, this takes far greater importance, in my opinion, for the longevity of future of this community.
And I think while we're doing these studies on these other areas, we can just incorporate this as we move along. And if that ends up being cheaper in the long run, we can do more, multiple things at once.
Moving on to the next agenda item, in terms of interest of time, communication, transparency, we've talked recently about our improvements to our city webpage, and those are continuing to be refined with additional information loaded that's intended to be interacted with the citizens in terms of getting service. We've talked about OpenGov, obviously the newsletter, our citizen survey. Is there anything else we really need to stand in terms of, we've talked at this point on that, we talked about adding, demonstrating that we're historically old, and those communications may be seamless with our tourism efforts. And I think Commissioner Terry mentioned the next generation of workers, and so maybe we'll move on to tracking and maintaining workforce to provide desired city services. One of the outcomes of the pension reform in Frankfurt is bound to occur, I mean, there's going to be a pension reform bill of some sort. I, just recently, I've been talking to Mike and I've talked with the member of leadership on Monday, and I talked with others following that, Mike, and I think my conclusion is at least that we're not going to have a special session before January. There's not agreement on the bill among the involved parties sponsoring the bill, voters for the bill or those that have the bill. So it's going to necessarily roll into a new session. My prediction, based upon being a lobbyist there for quite a number of years, is that not much traction will happen on that until I can file a deadline in January. So in February, it's going to receive increased attention and some of it will have to pass. We've seen the earlier models or the bill proposals that have impact on the city and on the teachers and on others, and what that ultimately looks to be yet is to be determined. You know, I don't think anybody can predict exactly what that's going to be, but I think there will be pension reform legislation passed. Hopefully what that will do in terms of the city's narrow viewpoint is to spread out what is otherwise going to be a very significant additional contribution that we're going to have to make in the next most few years. The earlier draft talked about no increase in the first year and then picking up a third or third in the following three years, so you would get to a faster solid city in that four-year period. I think there's consideration being that maybe that will be lengthened somewhat as we were on NCRS, a track to be solid anyway. But all of that, as we move to 401K system for all retirees, for all workers, is going to put greater challenge on city HR people and the city itself to attract and pay competitive wages. If you do not have, they go with the parachute pension as the driving force, they're getting you there, keeping you there. And with the next millennium of workers who aren't applying to stay anywhere, if they're not greatly appreciated and receive a lot of reinforcement along the way, it's going to mean, in my opinion, that we're going to have to be competitive with private industry in terms of paying. And that means, I could just say still, probably helps forward.
I think it also adds more emphasis, particularly on this upcoming generation who are really focused on quality of life issues, charitable aspect of giving and connectivity. I think it really, and that's our advantage thus far. Great place to live.
It is. We're-
Plenty of places to plug into, plenty of charitable opportunities.
We've heard other communities in one of our group meetings with the larger cities, you may not have attended this, but one I can recall, but Hopkinsville, for example, they have their industrial development prospect model of economic growth, and they've sort of not stopped doing that, but they put much greater emphasis on quality of place and all those attributes to get workers there, younger workers that will complement or meet, you know, the job needs, and they're going at it from that point of view. And that's probably how we're going to have to also respond in part to attract. But the other challenge that we have, and that is the uncertainty of the healthcare market, you know, and the withdrawal of insurers in that, and that is a challenge for us, as you said earlier, to have a flexible plan in everybody's needs. And we spent close to two million dollars currently for healthcare costs for our workers. It's a large part of their total compensation. We received, we negotiated with the existing carrier last year and received a one percent premium discount, which was almost unheard of, which wasn't ever in their heart, but was because we had moved from a period of greater utilization to a period of improved outcomes.
One percent or ten percent?
There was one percent decrease, one percent decrease in total premium. So that is different than our earlier several years' experience, where we would experience a rate increase of eight and a half or ten percent or twelve percent in the years preceding that. Healthcare is a difficult issue to address in cost containment. People have expensive things happen to them, they need healthcare to want to provide, even it's just a major challenge between now and the budget approval process.
But it's, but it's not burdened terribly, it's grounded, a lot of those folks have covered.
Including the county. Including the county. Now, I would find, without knowing a whole lot about the county's healthcare plan, they didn't achieve, I don't think, a discount like we achieved. I think we've got superior coverage, and I think our costs are roughly equivalent. You know, there's no free lunch. At the end of the day, you've got to decide what your costs are. Now, companies have recently developed self-funded mechanisms where you basically set aside an amount to pay your expected claims, instead of administrative costs, contracted claims administrators, by reinsurance, cover a gap between, you know, what you expect to pay or the aggregate that you did pay, so your costs are slimmed. All that can be done, but it's not paid. And it's, has a lot of ifs along the way. I mean, a fully insured product is one that you know what you're getting, at least year to year, you may ultimately pay as much or more over the long term, but it's predictable at least for twelve years, twelve months.
You know, let's not overlook the advantages of health savings account, which, one of the big untold advantages, portability. You know, so much builds up a health savings account, that is their money, and if they decide to go somewhere else and want it, they take that with them.
And that might be good for the employee and bad for the court.
But, well, but that's also to be seen as a competitive advantage, because again, what's good for the employee is kind of, that's what helps, you know?
It is, and as you know, I spent a number of years in the insurance industry with the leading cities and cities generally, and in healthcare, as with any pool group of risks, you've got to have enough money to cover the costs.
Right.
And you start subdividing your employee base, or some are not in the insured portion or the self-insured portion, you're driving up irrationally the cost for those that remain in the other sector. And so it's a balancing act, you know, and conventional wisdom in years prior was, you had to have everybody in, it's great, otherwise you're going to be left with the old folks and your rate is going to be unimportant. So that's the balancing act in developing flexible approaches, you know, to have some understanding of the essential numbers to make a program work, whether it's insured or self-insured. So I don't have an answer for that, I'm just suggesting it's a major challenge, and it But I think it's one that we can't address, and we're in the process of addressing it. We've got some needs to get with the folks who may be called upon to provide greater assistance to us in that, in one of those issues.
What are other cities typically offering?
Smaller cities, and I talk about, always have a hundred or fewer probably are, any of those are the least, it's the worst program, healthcare program. Most of the cities, except for the very large ones, are, I think, insured with one of the carriers, the carriers have become fewer going forward, and perhaps some of the large ones are self-funded or self-insured.
We have to get a new carrier.
We do, because our existing largest business policy tends to thirty percent, which we will make January one, I think, a period of time to solve that.
And I think, Jody may be able to speak to this, I don't know if you have any idea what our industry offers, but I think our younger workforce and our millennials in particular expect some sort of high deductible health savings plan instead of, we'll recover again, Mr. Atkins said not too long ago, everyone is surprised when he says the city pays for full benefits, which is very generous. And I had a conversation with Jamie Chaney at KLC, and that was his response too, was that it's very generous, and that most places are going to have deductible health savings planned.
It's increasingly-
In cities.
It's increasingly rare to provide a hundred percent employer-paid healthcare benefits in any organization. Cities as well, there are still some that do that, but they're not too many. But again, it's the total compensation structure that has to address.
We've got to do a better job of letting people know, potential employees that it's very big.
A lot of times the benefits are cheaper than plain salary, I mean, the increase in salary, because you have to pay the related social security and all that stuff.
Right, it's cheaper for the employee. Right, and you get a five-dollar raise or whatever time you pay all the cost of, cost of that, you're better off, the healthcare provided. And when we, not only you can speak to this, but as we, as we pay benefits, we also have to pay contributions on salaries, we have to pay retirement benefits and so forth on that too. So it's, takes an analysis of several forms.
Will you ever cast for vacancy? What's included in the, if ever tapped in this post?
In the advertisement, we generally just publish, you know, you go to our website, look at the, look at the job description. When they come in, or when anybody comes in, they're casting or in position, health insurance is the person that's mentioned, how much it costs to, you know, zero, how much it costs the city, and they understand coming in, that's a key benefit. But that's why we, honestly, that's why we do get employees, some employees do get, they come in only for health insurance. They realize the wages, but I think all those departments can speak to that.
It might be drive venus if we could put in wire, advertisement, these are the benefits. And just big bold letters. I'm writing, I'm writing leaves for the city, but I'm getting eight bucks an hour. But they can also look at some cool time, be a full-time, yes, we're just going to try.
Because health as well.
Yeah.
And millennials may not need that, think they need that insurance, because they're in a car wreck or, you know, something pops up that they're not aware of, all of a sudden, that, that insurance is really-
That goes along with it, I'm talking, I thought the fifth grade is the last time I talked about it. And these are fifth graders that hugs it. And-
I expected the fifth grade students to be shocked and surprised, but the four adults in the class who got by, essentially, were the fifth graders. They were not.
Well, but I think the real discussion here is, the city may not be able to maintain that and offer that in the future. So that's where we are, is how do we, how do we face that appropriately?
That's right.
I think it's a balancing act of your benefit, your benefits versus your dollars, you know that, but if you take that away, you have to increase salaries. Because the only thing we're getting, you know, since they're taking a retirement change in it, it's not, that is not a draw for us anymore.
Well, I think when, do you ever, have you ever had anyone ask if they can opt out and take a, a salary?
I haven't.
No?
Me, maybe way back, if somebody's on a health insurance plan somewhere else, they may have that. When I, I mean, when I started, when Ken started, probably Tommy, we had a stipend, I guess is what you'd say, that if you took single, you got like $1,200 a month, a year, added to your salary, that's only $1,200, but it was stipend, say, okay, if you take single, you get this, and you spread it across your pay throughout the year. So some of us took that, like, hey, you know, that's extra dollars, you know?
But once I get married, no.
Now, they went up.
Well, you're going to go where it's cheaper. So that's what I mean is, you know, right now, there's, there's no comparison. They're automatically going to put their family on our plane. So if we have something that's comparable that they can compare, then they're going to go, they may not take our insurance, they may go on their spouse's, if it's cheaper for them in the long run. We have a different structure.
If it's free, everyone's going to come here. Why struggle is if the spouse is working in their board, provides coverage, and comes to us, their costs will be free and better than.
But I think it's, I think we've got to sell that being for value. We're sitting here in the Center College right now.
Yeah, I know what he's going.
Okay. Jennifer knows where we're going, right? Well, because as a full-time employer of Center College, I'm contributing to my family insurance, right? So because Jennifer works at the city, and I work at Center, our insurance is going to be with the city. Jennifer might make a lot less pay by the hour, but me, what she's making with the life insurance, it has to be made a benefit to a family. I only got two kids, don't we?
Three.
Three, four, five? I, I mean, it it's challenging. Like, you know, me and Ron, we talked about it, and Donna, and Robert, you know, for us, you know, police now, with their premium. I mean, there, there's a shortage, and they're, they're going every day because of the uncertainty and the pension. The law lost 75 officers in July, just remember. They put something up in our training in October, that 1,800?
Would 1,800 officers have over 19 years in the state?
In the state.
If a third of them left, it's only 15 capital classes in addition to the category.
Right, that would be a criminal.
Right. You know, we, we have a lot of officers that don't live in the city. And so, you know, there's other agencies, you know, we, we try to recruit the best. I feel like we've got a, our hiring process is pretty good, and we've got A1 people, you know, we've lost, we just lost one yesterday that's going to go to state police, we'll notify. And we've lost one to the state police last year, early last year. You know, so, you know, when you recruit quality people, that we do, you know, that they're going to be, you know, nobody's, you know, state police, we had like three people a couple of years ago that was in that process, and they were like, hey, you know, we know y'all did a good background, we know y'all trained them, teach them, they're going to have structure, so, you know, that, they're robbing us. So we have to find that balance of paying benefits. You know, we believe, we've got to look at that, because, you know, we do have quality people, we're a good-sized agency. It's hard, I'm not going to say it's not, you know, it, it's difficult. What's the health benefits for the state cooperates?
That's what I was asking.
Well, they're, they're paying a little bit better. I, I don't know what they're, as far as their.
We had one yesterday that says he's leaving, I asked him specifically, what's your, is your pay going to go up? Because remember, your health is, he's on family, is about $8, $8 an hour is what that is equivalent to the family plan. I said, are you going to go up that far and be able to take that cut? And so he, I mean, their salaries are starting at $49,000 a year, so yeah, he's going to go take that.
They've got medical benefits too, though, right?
They do, right.
Do they have to pay?
No, they have to pay. And he said, I pay, I'm going to pay $100 a week for my family, so that's $400 a month. But his pay is going up substantially, so he's not feeling that. He said, I'm still going to be bringing home, you know, a certain amount, but it will be higher than here.
So, so let's give people what they want, not necessarily what we think they need. Let's give them what they want. Because if they, if they can't see the value, that's not.
Which is money, isn't it?
That, that's not our, that's not our concern. Our concern is, we've got to give them whatever value they would seek. And if it's, if it's, if it's reduced benefits and a higher salary, and that's what it takes to get them in the door, that's a free market, they need it.
And like Bron said, that drives the surprise of everybody else. That's the young man's thing.
Anyway, with Slicer Dyson, it's a bigger economic number, it's a bigger monetary number, anyway you want.
It's, it's complicated.
You save here, you increase there.
We've got this much to allocate and so forth.
Right.
Right, we, we don't have any of that. But I think what you're expressing, that we need to be flexible in meeting their need or their desire, is the way at least you got to do it within our resource limitations. We won't solve this today.
Well, until I think about it.
Something like good news is, we're not alone in that solving this today.
You see, you make the day become a state trooper, it's going to make eight hours an hour, and that'd be $400 a month for his family.
We've got 30 minutes or 25, 8 minutes before our scheduled break at noon. Let me just open up your session, you've got the list of potential topics there that we want to maybe discuss, or maybe like someone else that you want to discuss. And so let's move in that direction, just for lunch, and we do want to have a second session after lunch, I think.
Anything with something that was going to be.
I'll start in terms of just one of those issues, my subscription issues, but we have a lot of issues. We've got, we've got pension issues, we've got some identified needs otherwise that require legislative favorable action. We've talked in prior years about the potential benefit of hiring lobbyists, or if not, how we can get more attention with the legislative process to have outcomes we wish to achieve. That's the general framing question, like I'll, I'll raise, because we've talked about that a lot. So, you know, I, after talking with Burton, I, you don't get anything on Burton, I, they contracted a lobbyist with the League of Cities. And I was asking him yesterday, I said, I recognize, and I've heard, that there's a little bit of heartburn from the governor and the League of Cities because of their strong emphasis on separation of CER as pension issue. Their, you know, they and teachers and others are running sort of counter to what the governor's tried to achieve, and it's delayed things, it's complicated things, and maybe caused some relationship issues. And that happens when you're a lobbyist and you are strong enough and you go against the tide. Bert's communication to me was, well, it's, you know, the League is still effective as a lobbyist, you know, many of the legislators still have good relationships with the League, it's more the governor's office on this particular issue that's a little bit determined about trying to solve the problem from this point of view. The question that I had in my mind was whether we should hire lobbyists or continue to rely on the League, which is actually a lobbyist, to help us on revenue issues and on any other special issues that we have yet to really address also in terms of local, road aid funds, or local road improvements, or other issues that we're running up on. And so Bert's response to me was that, well, the pension issues want to be addressed, and as if they get into comprehensive reform, tax reform, that we will have inevitably the League stepping up on the issue of the restaurant tax. He said, maybe they will, they will become a greater focus as we get into actual issues. So the, the question is, do we need to just continue to work with the League exclusively and have greater presence ourselves in terms of trying to work on some of those, or do you favor trying to get some other stores to help us on your other issues? That's the premise I can say at the beginning.
Well, my, my thought is, to continue with the League, unless we came up with some particular project or something that we needed to make sure help with, I mean, if it's something specific we needed to have lobbying for, I guess, then I would consider it, but otherwise, I think the League does a pretty good job looking out for the best interests of the citizens.
I think we know we've lost them enough.
That's probably true.
On specifics. So I, I would agree, I think that should be our first stop. Because anytime I've ever asked anyone there, they've gone out of their way to help, even if it is a specific, specific need to our city, and if they can't come plus, they will say, you know, that they can, or, you know, city to check in. So, you know, I, that's why we're a member, is to utilize them. And I don't think we do it enough. And just like with the insurance, health insurance issue, I think that's probably where they can help us with that. But if it comes down to something specific, that's bigger than we are, and, and they can't always step into specific issues to a specific city, then I think that's when we should look at getting some, getting some help.
I'll mention one of those specifics, and there's another specific out there that I won't get into at this point, maybe in executive session after months, but the League is not going to get into this issue of the restaurant tax. The League represents fourth and fifth-class cities who are very coordinated and very vocal and very active in opposing that legislation.
Well, they join forces through tourism, restaurants, retail. The League isn't picking it up, though?
The League will take, the League is not going to take it up, that's what J.D. told me, because that, that it's going to ruffle feathers with fourth and fifth-class cities.
It's not the life he gives off. Or what I've heard him say.
Is that what you heard, David?
Yeah, I, I mean.
Now, what we also heard Monday from Senator Hick, right? He said, this fourth and fifth-class coalition, he said, they are strong and they are voting. And he said, they are going to be a formidable group. So you're going to have to have some real influence behind the scenes to get these legislators to vote publicly for the restaurant tax in opposition to fourth and fifth-class cities.
The whole issue of tax reform, there's going to be such a nippy public issue that the legislators have to deal with. They're going to have to deal with it to generate additional revenue for the state. Otherwise, we're going to see, as the governor said, 15% reductions in state funding by agency for services in Kentucky, pay for pensions that already exist. So, I mean, they're going to have to, they're going to have to reform the pensions, they're going to have to come up with additional revenue for the state. And the question is, will we also get some additional revenue flexibility of that or not? And who knows? I mean, nobody can predict what the children's owners are going to do in great detail. We heard Dick saying that, you know, that they are formidable groups, it wouldn't be one easily to take on, but there are ways of doing that, which is holding them harmless for their opposition can be real. I mean, if they're harmless, they're existing, what's the basis for opposition? Bert said that he felt that the League would take up the, the issue if we got into tax reform, and there's ways of doing that. But even if they do or don't, here's the, here's the challenge. And how can one lobbyist representing our interest achieve that in a statewide mix of all of those local relationships? It would be very difficult to have anyone representing them do that. It's got to be a coalition of folks, or anything, anything that passes in Frankfurt represents agreement among the majority. And that comes about through lobbyists and local folks and interested parties, you know, working it out.
And we've got that group that you and I have attended for over a year. What, what do they call it? Home rule, the home rule?
Home rule cities, yeah, larger cities.
And.
There's high interest.
Right.
So are you saying the fourth and fifth-class cities have restaurant taxes?
Oh, yeah, for.
And they don't want smaller cities to have them?
They don't want larger cities.
They don't want the larger cities to have them. They are the smaller.
They are the small. And even, even the easy tiger.
Who's in that mix of the coalition?
Even though, even though the, correct, I remember wrong, even though the proposed legislation grandfathers in.
Yeah.
The fourth and fifth-class cities, so they lose nothing, they're, they're, they're holding on to, to, this would be letting camel's nose in under the tent, this would begin a slippery slope.
The cities aren't saying that, the tourism entities are saying that. So a lot of tourism folks think if we open up the restaurant tax, now it'll be transient room tax in a few years.
Now, keep in mind that.
City's going to come for all of our tourism money if we open up.
The proposed legislation, not only grandfather's fourth and fifth in, the proposed legislation also says that 25% of funds raised from the restaurant tax for first, second, and third class would go to tourism, 75%, hello, 75% goes to economic development. Roll that around in your head a minute, and think of what that, for city sizes down on 2014 numbers, that's 1.3 million a year, a year for economic development. Jody, does that, does that help you, does that help you a little bit?
That's what we're competing against in, for example, Texas and Arkansas, they've given them a percent of the sales, local sales tax.
It's what we're competing against in Nelson County. It's what we're competing against in Nelson County.
Economic development, connectivity, is that economic development?
Sure.
Hey, to me, to me, this is absolutely the keystone piece for this community going forward.
Economic development is a broad.
It is a broad term, and when you're, and when you're already seeing on the horizon a significant stretch on economic dollars, a significant stretch on our revenues, what's the answer here, folks? This is the only one that I see out there that is, is, it has a chance, maybe part of the pack.
There's an inherent unfairness if we're surrounded by communities that have the rest of the town. Which we hope.
Well, absolutely. And that can offset our, our costs, our impending costs on what's coming up with pensions. And if 25% is going to tourism, 75% is going economic development.
That's really all economic development.
Yeah, and that's the same pot of money, and it's not.
But if you look at a town like Bardstown, for example, they have the restaurant tax, or a town like Harrods, where they're fighting his tooth and nail because their budgets went from up here, and they've lost 75% of it. And the last I heard, that grandfather clause was taken out because negotiations became so tense. And the last I heard, the grandfather clause was taken out because negotiations became so tense. So I'm not sure they put the grandfather, so Barks Town would peak a hundred percent. But then those, those cities got angry because, well, they didn't really want that too. They want some money for economic development. So it's hard to tweak that system now that everybody is so entrenched in what they've been doing.
So whether we, whether we gets, whether the league represents us forcefully enough, I think this is our one shot at, at bat.
Well, we just need to nail down the league and see where they really stand on it because I got the same impression that you got, that the league is willing to take it up.
Well, last week's general session, they had to build, prepare to pass the Senate, I think, and the governor pulled it back and said, we'll deal with it later.
Yeah, my understanding was they had to vote in the Senate to do that.
But I mean, whether your total fund is, all those are compromises that could be made during the general session. But whether those are twenty-five percent of the legislation that is not added, July generated, what maybe was considered, I think it's all translated that it was up to twenty-five percent or a minimum of twenty-five percent would go to tourist commission centers, commissions, you know. Always, yeah.
Our, our state lobbying, our KACV and our Kentucky Travel Industry Association are lobbying hard against the change in the restaurant tax. So our lobbyists at a state level are arguing counter to what this community, or what I'm hearing from.
And you said lobby-ist or lobby-ists?
We have quite a few. MML and K works on our behalf through Kentucky, Kentucky Association of C, KACV's works with MML and K. And then Kentucky, KTIA is a lobby entity unto itself on behalf of the hospitality industry in Kentucky. Hank Phillips is the head of that. He used to be deputy commissioner. But they're lobbying, they're lobbying for no changes to the restaurant tax to keep it as it is, which is not what you're saying here.
Which is to not allow first, second, and third class cities to.
In tourism world, we're a minority. Everybody in tourism world wants to keep the restaurant tax as it is.
But in tourism world, they are, they are the coordinated majority in terms of having the lobbying effort in the ears in Frankfurt. Jimmy Haden laid it out for us.
But in tourism's defense, they have, they're a huge industry, they're a huge revenue generator. They're one of the largest and ever-growing industries in Kentucky, and tourism's funds have been swept year after year to fund underfunded portions of the budget. So tourism folks have seen their, have seen money produced, yet money still taken away, and every year their budgets are reduced when revenue keeps increasing. So why would you be taking money? Why would we not be doing more with state parks? We see this works for, for Kentucky. So, I mean, we, we've had funds swept in the general session every year to balance the budget because we, tourism brings in the money and then it covers shortfalls everywhere. So there's very much a sentiment in Frankfurt that tourism doesn't get what it deserves. So this falls in that pot and keeps it. Here you go. Here we are generating more money and yet more money taken from our permission. So it's understandable why it's a, a fight.
I think it also takes us forging relationships with our senators and representatives.
We've done that.
So my, my proposal would be that if we get the tax, I'm not opposed to twenty-five percent going to tourism. I want the other seventy-five percent to contribute to the policy.
Which is twenty-five percent more than we, it's, it, last time we did the math, oh, last time we did the math, it was about four hundred thousand to the CDB and over one point five million to the city.
I mean, folks, this is.
And we, I mean, yeah.
Every year.
It would be an influx of cash for the community, for sure.
And the only tax that they use is really.
Because they would lose money. The tourism folks would lose money to have, right now, the tourism gets a hundred percent of restaurant tax. If the law has changed, some of their restaurant tax money then goes to the city, so they're gonna see a decrease in budget. So they've all banned it.
Unless you put the grandfather clause in.
Right, well. Right. But the league wasn't willing to put the.
But if you said he doesn't have a restaurant tax.
Well, yeah.
Right, many much, right, 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 right. But there's very few, there's very few. There's very few second-class cities. There's, I think there's twenty of us in the state of Kentucky. And of the twenty, of the twenty of those, there's probably three or four of us CDB directors that are attending these meetings and things. So there's mu- much more voice inside for leaving the tax as it is, where I'm.
Well, this sounds like that those, I mean, we need to form a coalition with other like-minded cities and make the tax for that.
I think we have that.
We do. There's big meetings.
But I will say kind of publicly, I'm kind of frustrated with that group because.
We haven't met in a while.
And, and why is it they haven't already brought up this, this avenue of hiring a battery of lobbyists? When you're just gonna have to have that. If your opposition's got twenty people that work in halls and you've got three, I can pretty much tell you how that's gonna end up.
You want my answer to that?
Yeah.
I think that those group officials are supporting the league priorities and all the priorities.
They're all need priorities.
That's what the league priorities are in terms of potential forums.
But that's putting all of our eggs on one basket. And, and that basket's already been a little bit tarnished with the CBRS separation.
Well, there are relationship bruises, maybe governors, all of us, but not necessarily legislators.
I don't think it would go over to voters that you were commissioning old lobbyists to lobby for increased taxes.
Well, what's, what's not understood.
You're gonna have increased taxes.
I know, I know. I happily pay my taxes, but I think that's why they're not.
Something's gonna happen. What's not understood on that issue is that the owners of the restaurant, the restaurant businesses would be exempt from taxes. They're not raising taxes. It would be on those consumers rather than the producers. So, and that includes visitors, except for large standards we're talking about, coming in as Catalans and so forth, and not, you know, necessarily taxing us a hundred percent. We can get taxed some, but if the influx were to have a hundred thousand people, we would benefit from tourism in that regard.
Well, and the key to that is, this is so.
True.
There's a lot of evidence that shows, well, all the communities around us have restaurant tax. There's a lot of evidence that shows the restaurant tax does not deter eating at a restaurant or the development of new restaurants.
If you want to.
And it's a decision to eat out.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's right.
But from a restaurant owner's perspective, when you hand a customer a bill, you have a, a whole lineup of this tax, this, like, you know, if you had, you have an alcohol tax, now you have the food tax and the sales tax, and so collectively it adds up, and that's, that's there. I, it still doesn't affect if I go out to eat or not.
No, it do.
There's studies show that it does.
It, it, I mean, I don't think about, we have to pay two dollars extra in tax. I'm not gonna order that. Much just like when I book a hotel room, I don't account for the time you're staying. You just know you're gonna pay.
When you, when you book a hotel room, you're gonna.
It's just.
It's all added on.
It doesn't factor into your price point of what you're, where you're gonna stay or anything. It's just a.
Wow. It's true.
Again, this is a, this is, this is the single largest, most important issue that I think we face. And I think we're gonna get one, one swing at, at the plate.
This is already the second inning. It was considered one general session. Usually plays for a couple or three, like, second or something, but significantly occurred. I mean, it does.
Well, to Jennifer's point about, you know, what the voters think, well, you know, if we spend this much money on a lobbyist, but it brings in over a million.
I all agree that.
Significantly opposite.
I don't know what it, I, I mean, if you, maybe you would talk to somebody like an MML and K that was a firm. Um, 'cause I don't know, as Ron said, with such disarray at the state level, there's so much going on, I don't know if one lobbyist would be able to change state policies.
So, so if, if our group that we're affiliated with is, is, is willing to, is not only willing, but desires to stand in the shadow of Kentucky League of Cities?
Well, they're gonna have to come out in the shadows and be more of a unified force with their local legislators. In my opinion, it's too late to hire lobbyists for this particular issue. We're better off utilizing that group of cities that have been needing this for two years and developing a strategy or communicating statewide with that group with their legislators. I mean, if you hire whatever lobbyists now, if he or she doesn't have that relationship with a hundred thirty-eight legislators, it's too late to start.
Who are those other cities? Anderson is one.
Oh, yeah, I was sort of thinking, here's the problem.
It's, it's a formidable group. When you look at the cities that would benefit from this, you look at that and you go, that's your muscle. Local Lexington.
Lexington doesn't want the tax.
Because they're tur- yeah.
They, well, they think it's too much.
Too much revenue.
Too much revenue.
Well, they shouldn't have.
Certainly.
If they can adopt the taxes, they may choose or not in whatever way.
Right, just give us the option to. That's what we need a lot of, just give us the option to put it here.
You don't have to make yourself. It's just the options there.
That's the part I can't get past. Why would you not just make it even and then let locally the community decide? I mean, government happens at the local level, so let's just, if this community doesn't want it, that's fine, but we should decide that.
We're five or six minutes away from our break time. Anything else before that for lunch? So we're talking about, we're in the other issues, right? So, yeah, you know, I've kind of liked a little bit what I've seen from our counterparts across the street at the county government in terms of their magistrates spreading out. And I think we've done a pretty good job as commissioners, but not formally to sort of spread out and be involved in certain groups and that what they actually do is report back. And I'll do that from a trails committee perspective, but might want to give that some thought, a little bit more formally to be, for, for our lobbyists to be a little bit more involved in certain groups. We are formally actually the EDP. I somewhat informally, I guess, I'm trails committee, and I show up at all the parks and rec meetings. But it seems to me, and I guess where I'm trying to go is, we encourage and want EDP, CBB, different groups to come to our meetings and be involved. I don't know if we're reciprocating as well as we should. I'm not sure that we are. So I guess giving that a little thought that maybe, you know, we all have some certain interests, so it's easy. It's easy for me to go to Parks and Rec. I've been involved in that the whole time I've lived here, so I don't mind doing that. But maybe we're missing some other groups. I think J.H. has done well with senior citizens and so forth. And we may be doing better than I think. This is something that's out of my, please.
Well, I think we've talked about that a lot. It's just something that's never really happened, breaking up our boards and committees between the five of us.
So what if we did this? What if we took a list of all the various committees and if it's twenty, then it means everybody's gotta take four. Does that sound like the plan?
And then also, I think our agencies need to do a better job of coming in quarterly. We need to make that formal and part of the.
Maybe if sometime in the month of December, we put together that list, circulate it around, everybody can pick their four and yeah, we'll balance it out.
And we get them on a schedule to come to us.
Yeah.
Especially.
Do you want the committees or do you want the funding, the people to fund?
She wants, she wants the people that we fund.
I think the people we fund are a priority, but we would, we also need to hear from them. Which, I mean, if we are going, if we're gonna break up the committees between us, we all know more what's going on, but, you know, I think maybe committees could come twice a year.
Well, there are two aspects of committees, or at least three, maybe one is knowing what's going on and participating in the committee. Of course, as a city commissioner, city commissioner, you have no authority, him and committee per se, to have this participating. The other aspect of that we've talked about from time to time is the fact that you'd like to know what the committees are doing. And we've talked about creating a better reporting mechanism other than their minutes where at city commission meetings collectively, you might have to report on what the committees' activities are. And sometimes we'll have a few committees appear to report information, but usually they don't. And so the reporting mechanism back to the city commissioners whole could be improved. You're certainly free, as many of you do, attend the city committees, but you have no authority really in participating. It's just an individual, but the official being interested in that.
I think we understand we don't have any authority, but, you know. People ask us, why did the city plant this complex?
Right.
Well, that's beautification, and I don't really know because I don't ever go to a beautification or ever hear anything from beautification. So, you know, that kind of just puts us in the loop.
We need to build that bridge.
Absolutely.
And I go to Parks and Rec, I'm sitting out there to vote or comment unless asked upon. That's what they should do. But they're happy I'm there and they wanna ask you questions because they wanna kind of get a feel for what this group might be thinking about support.
My board has mentioned that they really appreciate that you've been coming to our meetings.
And I go to housing for me.
We need a, we need a recommendation on, on the placement.
Well, what I was gonna say was that I know, and I'm considered a part of the quorum. If, if, there's only five members. First thing that shocked me. But I'm, I'm considered a part of the quorum. I'm making second motions and voting everything else.
Are you a bit different in that you're an official, does it need to that, you're an appointee to that?
I guess. Well, what we do is, we have so many different functions that some we appoint commissioners to, some we appoint just citizens to, and some I'm like, oh, I know where they got organized, but they're out there. So when you talk about committees, I, I think the key important thing to me is that we put together a reporting system where they come and report this once or twice a year, rather than try to work up one to all the committees. And Ron, correctly though, every time I give a citizen's complaint, what I have decided I'm doing is I tell them it's two, three, eight, twelve hundred, and you asked for this department. Now, I was in your office, I think I gave you a whole concern I had, but I'm just getting to, I'm trying to educate citizens that there's a process. But then the following, as a city commissioner, I'm not gonna do that.
You don't need to know about the flowers. The petunias inside.
Yeah, I'm not gonna do that. Not gonna do that. What I call the dirty work. Some guy called me up and said he saw a car going down, coming out of Southern College parking lot there, oh, this people going the wrong way. They won't know why. The world we had put any signs out there. The same as a one-way road.
I actually wondered that.
There are two signs there though.
Is there, is there, I didn't like it the other day.
We stood there parking lot with bill.
That's funny. I think they're superior.
A couple things after lunch or now?
Uh, yeah, very quickly now.
One of them is, one of, one of, one of the things that I want to kind of focus on for two thousand eighteen is, is a refocusing on our cemetery. We had a very productive meeting, believe it or not, but the, but the the main person who operates Lexington Cemetery is from Danville. Mother still lives there on East Main Street. So when we, we sat out with him for an hour and fifteen minutes, I mean, it was a, it was a brain dump. It was just amazing amount of, of information that he gave us. And we've got a wonderful cemetery, and they're so proud of theirs in Lexington, and rightfully so. It's been a priority for them. It's been a source of pride. And I, I'd like to see us begin to make our cemetery a source of pride as opposed to a source of complaints, a source of, it, 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 it seems to be a necessary evil on behalf of the city. We need to make that what it really could and should be.
Because Lexington cemetery.
Privately, privately owned, yes, because they got smart way back in the late eighteen hundreds. You know, they now have an eighty-six million dollar endowment. Well, folks, you gotta start somewhere. You gotta start somewhere. So we need to begin to do that. The other thing, Ron, you've included some information in here on, on grant writers. I'm not sure I know, know what you're going to do with that, but I, I definitely think it's a subject for discussion at some point in eighteen.
It is. I included that. It's, it's a good background piece from a grant writer's perspective of how you plan for how to implement and are successful with grants. But a short, one-minute discussion would be that it points to the need to buy departments. I, I mean, grants are, are a financial mechanism, and we implement our goals by our departments and by our budget. It's, it's not productive to think that we can just hire a grant writer and operate that outside of our process and management of service. It's, it's not productive to think that we can just hire a grant writer and operate that outside of our process and management of service. So what the grant writer says, not me, but what the grant writer says is that you've got to go through department, identify the grants you're already getting, target those that you might want to get, your needs, figure out a way to get there and, and then have a, an accounting, this is simplified towards, have an accounting process to track those, because there's a lot of management of grant required too. You might recall a number of years ago in the ice storm, where you had created Josh Morris, and he just ran here or ran there, and we got the grant, right, almost half a million dollars to turn the basement of City Hall into a storm shelter. And we struggled with that, citizens objected to it, we rejected the grant, even though it was a grant we got. So just writing grants, I mean, if we had to say today among this group here, what would be your top three grants? We have different opinions that may be appropriate or not appropriate, and so it's got to be a planned process of need and where we go.
So maybe one way to do the editing down in the first of the year, everybody kind of creates some kind of wish list that you might have. And I know I've got mine, you probably have some things of your own, and let's maybe filter it, start it that way?
Well, we can start that way, but again, I, I see it as, as a both a staff and a commissioner issue.
Correct.
And remember, grants are not free. I mean, it's also a matching requirement to some degree, and that gets into resource allocation. So grants, meanwhile, they, when money, they not, they're not always backed.
Well, it sounds like we need our common heads to make the wish list.
Yes.
But, you know, as you, as you go down the road, you say, oh, I need this. Well, there's probably a grant for that.
Play it, play.
And even if it is a expense that has come up, sometimes there's still a grant for that. And so, and I think that's what we run into a lot is, okay, we're gonna, we're planning Parks and Rec. Well, there are probably a ton of grants out there for us to do our master plan and to do our, improve our parks system. But we don't have one person out there looking for that. So if we say, we're gonna do this project, well, there are probably grants out there. We need one person at City Hall who can say, yes, I can look for that grant for you. That's my vision of a grant writer. And maybe it's two or three different people that write some different grants for specific things. But I think there's money out there that we are missing out on that will far outweigh the cost of most of the grants. You know, I had a conversation with Jennifer. What were you even talking about? Connectivity?
Maybe. EDP meeting?
Yes, and the EDP meeting? We were talking about connectivity.
Oh, no, we were talking about sun shades, was it the park?
Yes. And she says, there's a grant. We just have to apply for it, or, you know, and, and not you just have to apply for it, but you, somebody knows that there's a grant. You may have to do things a little differently to get that grant, but there's a grant. Why not have someone who can filter that? That's my idea of a grant writer, and maybe that's why, but.
Well, I, if I was going to say the city was going to hire a grant, a grant writer, I would agree with what she told me. I use the college here as an example. They have one full-time grant writer. She's constantly researching grants, but she would say that a heartbeat, nothing's out of our self.
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay, it's got to be everybody that's who's up in a different apartment.
Absolutely.
When those things come across their desk, they might refer it to her. She, she's dropped piles or listing them on time, people look like them, so if it comes back around next year, she lets people in here and time them. That, that's a full-time job, and, I mean, that's an expensive full-time job. A lot of people will say, okay, well, we hired, you know, this grant writer, here's a very minimal salary, and you get ten or fifteen percent of it to bring in the grants. That's a risky job for a grant writer, but.
But sometimes the salary is written to the grant.
Well, that's what I'm saying, right, yeah, that's right.
And school systems, school systems hire and employ grant writers.
Yeah.
And just like with, you know, even though we rejected, I was at those meetings where that grant was discussed as a citizen. And even though we rejected that, it still showed that he was looking and that, you know, and come to find out, that grant, it was going to take a lot more construction and, and cost than we realized, because I guess Josh thought that it was already kind of set up and it was just going to be minimal adapting that area, but it wasn't. So that was a good decision to reject that grant.
I would.
But if we had never applied.
It wasn't a good decision though.
In the first place, then we would have never known.
It wasn't a good decision to reject the grant though, because having the laws and, it's because that building was new, they won't put all the required things into it basically.
I, I think what we're all saying, it's strategic and, and we need our, because that requires a closer cooperation, planning. And I will say, it's not good to apply for grants and reject them. I'm just wondering if you're asking for future grants, you know?
Well, I know, but, but you have to look into what was good and what was not, and what everyone's willing to do. You know, to me, that was, I, I mean, I was just a citizen at that time. I assumed that was an interesting decision to reject that grant. But we probably can't ever reply to that grant again. So that's a chance you take. But, and, and I know that you say we need to know what we want before we start applying, but we, we do need to know what we want, but then we need to hire that person to help us plan what we want and need. So I, I don't think we can have necessarily a specific list of what we want before we hire someone. Does that make sense?
There's a lot of chicken or egg.
Yeah, there is.
Well, the grant writer is not going, I, I am a graduate of the Grant, Grantship Institute of America. I went to a league of courses, league of cities, and failed in my retirement there, and I thought I'd be a grant writer. And I learned a lot in that process, and there's a lot to learn. You have to be a researcher, you have to be a writer, you've got to ask the newspaper questions, flocking word, how, and all that, and how much, who says what, and all of that, and you've got to maintain files. But you've got to know your essential business and the gaps there, you know, that you're trying to fill. A grant writer cannot tell Jennifer how to get more.
For the next trail to go.
Or trails. I mean, so it's not interface with, with staff.
Right.
But it's, it's a skill set based upon writing ability, based upon accumulation of files and knowledge, and based upon knowledge and access to tools to find grants that are open. So it's, it's a complicated process.
So it sounds to me like an interface of two databases, one generated by staff, one generated by commission. And we see where we can link up.
That, that would be a start. I mean, we also, last year, or in the current budget year, we subscribe to a list now where we can see what grants are available. I mean, we could, we could search from A to Z in terms of any grant. But how does that deal with any particular issue? We're going to have the time to do it, we're going to have the priority need identified. And, you know, I'll just have to say, we are a skeleton crew at City Hall. And we might get futuristic and greening on Wednesday afternoon after lunch, but there's not much time to do that.
There's, there's, I think one of the things that I've learned recently too is that there's a distinction when it comes to how much money you want to get the grant for. So if you're going for a grant that's like a million and a half dollars, we've looked at some of this for, for trails. There's companies that will act as consultants to our Trails Committee that will write that grant in a particular way, they will build it all in. And you're going to get the big pots of money because you're more trusted in your planning. So for example, with the TAP grant that we all sat around and wrote for the twenty-one sixty-eight, looking back on it now, there was a lot I just didn't know. I would have put in a lot more money for a lot more things. So I think there's a time and a place where somebody that's industry-specific, that would be able to advise on this particular type of grant is the route you would go. But then there's all of these eight thousand, ten thousand, fifteen thousand, that what you're talking about, like, I get grants from Kaboom all the time to do playground equipment, right? I mean, I'm a father and girl, my girls, like, I don't have a morsel of a second. So that's the kind of grants that, that swirl around and like, and I think I even talked to you about the dermatology one for the eight thousand. It's like, it's not just the writing of it, it's then I'm taxing these guys with all sorts of, poor Erica's always trying to get all the canceled checks and invoices. And so when you get a grant, it's a ripple effect for all the work you create for a lot of people. So I, I think, I think you have to not only project-based grant strategy, but what's your long-term goal? Like, do you, I mean, those ten thousand dollars rack up over a period of time. So if you pay somebody thirty-five thousand dollars to bring in, you know, ten, ten thousand dollar grants, well, you're winning, but, right. I don't know, it's, then is that person that's, it's a project manager essentially, is what it is.
You have someone to funnel that through. Instead of you going to Erica and saying, I need you to take time out of your day.
Right.
To do this, it's someone else that may have, already have access to some records or.
Yeah.
Um, you know, we, we lost a streetscape attorney. We didn't get that last streetscape grant.
Yeah, but they had nothing to do with us. I, I absolutely disagree with the fact that the city's management of that had anything.
That was a great application.
That was a solid.
It was a really good.
It was not as bad as what's been portrayed.
No, I've, I've.
Now, saying that, we need to.
It was a competitive.
Liberate it.
Would that have happened had?
We had a grant, we had a third-party grant writer over here.
We did own that one, KLC, the KLC.
Um, now, could you, the thing with those grants, can you do those differently? Yes. Now, but that streetscape stuff, that tied to any delay that the city has caused, I think she can talk to her experience on twenty-one sixty-eight, because she often talked about before, can we help with that? Is there anything we can do? And, you know, how long has it taken you on TAP grant on twenty-one sixty-eight?
We are just now getting movement two years later.
It's stunning, the, the delay, and consistently, if you go to Frankfurter and you say, well, God, what's, what's happening? You know, and there's, they will always lay down on the local folks. It's not, there's as much a bottleneck in District Seven.
But a grant writer could arguably help with that, because there's a lot of time, like, Earl, can you call District Seven?
Correct.
That's my point. Earl, can you call Districts, and he doesn't necessarily, as city engineer, need to be bothering calling District Seven constantly.
He's annoying.
Anointing them, and, you know, so I see why, but then our application just sits somewhere for years, like the, the Henson Trail. We've been talking about turning dirt on that for a long time, and Mark Morgan and I were like, we're losing credibility, this is, it needs to show up, and.
Then last week, we got to revise it again.
We got, so, I mean.
My revision.
But a grant writer could help with that, that should be a process.
But there's somebody who could focus on that and say, okay, this is the revision that needs to be made, and not necessarily bother anybody else, because they would already know.
It's a complicated.
It is.
Situation.
Still don't be bothering those same people.
Right.
That, that goes back to the same thing with the skeleton crew.
Right.
You know, you, you still, I mean, I still have to go to Michelle and ask her for my grant, okay, I need a copy of this, I need a copy of that. So even though I know what's going on, I'm right beside her, I still got to go get that and come back.
Well, I've said.
Financial administration reporting too, that's just a common one, right? But you've got to have a way of managing all of those grants to go centralize purpose for all the different purposes. So it's, it's not just get a grant and use it solid.
Oh, I know, I know. And then there are recurring grants, you know, that we always, that someone could just file those through. I, I just think the problem's way out, out way to the front.
So is that, it's an opportunity, it's an opportunity.
So we can add grant writer to our list of four new priorities?
Well, you know, grant writer's been on my list for about three years now.
Our old time grant writer?
Well, I've got down here assistant city engineer, human resource person, I got cemeteries, and I got grant writer, and just four things that I think we sort of come to the surface as possibly new things.
Maybe it's not just a grant writer, it's a more of a project manager. So then they can do more things instead of just write grants.
Yeah. And then, going back to cemeteries, the city owns, how many cemeteries?
More than two.
Three.
Can somebody tell us what they are? I'm going back to Mike Davis's art, and there's a newspaper, and I was like, okay, Mike, you were right. So what, what cemeteries do we say we own and we may name?
Hilldale.
Right, Hilldale?
Hilldale.
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 There's a level one at the corner of Alta and. Walden.
Walden.
There's one on West End.
We don't maintain that one yet. But we, we have always aided, when they, when, when Mr. Hunt comes in, when the groups that want to be working there, we've always aided them by providing. Yeah, for example.
But that's not ours, is that private?
It's no man's land. Theoretically, it's not. I, I, is that fair?
Yeah, I call it, I call it the Kirby Lanes Cemetery.
Yeah.
But it needs to be, something needs to be done with it though.
Yeah.
Because it is, it's got Civil War soldiers buried in it, so it's got former slaves buried. And, uh, it's just.
But now, that's not the only one.
Oh, I know you're right.
You know, and I, you know, there's another one on the south side of town that's, that's also no man's land.
What's the one way out toward the, the farm that it buried?
Yeah, about in the county.
The county, that's out of the city, right, okay. But we need to figure out what these places are and, and get these titles ownership to them and then start maintaining them. Because I, I felt really embarrassed when I read that article that Mike, is it Mike Dennis?
Mike Dennis.
Mike Dennis.
And that led to the other, because I feel said, heck, Mike, you're right. If the state says that we're supposed to be responsible for them, then we the R P D need something about them. Now, another one, the Kirby Lanes is going to cause some problems, because it's got a gravel road leading down there. And it's got, wow, some great black fence in them, used to have black fence in them, now they're all restored, but, you know. It, it's got some great potential, uh, on your African-American sites.
Yes, and we have a gravestide with it, I know.
Yeah, but, and what's the one out there, you've been working with, uh? Down in Johnson City, yeah. Well.
Found everybody.
The city, the city or somebody that owned it, they gave it away to private folks, they did something to it, kind of strange, right? But when you decide about cemeteries and get, but I think our cemetery committee just looks at two. If we're going to have cemeteries, we're going to have them in there, we need to take your, our four. Why do you know about the one at Alta?
Yeah, that was. The Kirby Lanes Cemetery, Black and Better description, it has been, you know, just personally, I mean, I think, you know, not as city engineer, I think we, the city needs to do something out there, because as, as, as folks that are aware of things like that, as they continue to age, and, and we need to capture those resources now.
Yeah.
And, you know, there's some of those things that, that the city needs to do, you know. I started that, I started saying that all around, I didn't want to make, I didn't want to make you right. I was so bad, letting you miss a roll.
There's grants for everything. It's true.
Lunch.
Well, there's, there's a, there's a.
We can continue this at lunch.
And if there's a good advice, and if it's, it's.
It's interesting.
Yeah.
Okay.
Luckily, we can, because we're in session, you know, and so we're.
We have to return for lunch.
And then you can't catch me, you talked about, we were talking about, it's a new.
Okay.
See, I'm looking at you.
Our, our process is, your names on the list, go down, you have to capture whatever you want.
Yeah, I say.
Bring it up.
I say we have a break.
Let's break.
All right. Uh, I think we want to proceed in the interest of time, the question that we have before the information action, we're convening here, is whether we have any unfinished agenda discussion topics this morning or the executive session. The executive session after the discussion of council is after the discussion of annual legislation, we have an issue on that. It's to discuss the city manager, and also discuss property acquisition. So unless there are other issues, uh.
Only once? Only twice? I think not.
So you're making a motion that we go into executive session.
Somebody, let me, since you don't have your cheat sheet.
I don't have any.
Yeah, we're on our cheat sheet.
Let me tie that.
Remember, you're.
I think the mayor will entertain a motion to go into executive session pursuant to caris sixty-one, eight, ten, one F, to discuss a personnel matter, particularly the value, the annual valuation of the city manager. And, what's that?
Our property acquisition.
And pursuant to caris sixty-one point eight, ten, one B, to discuss the possible acquisition of real property, which the disclosure of which.
acquisition of real property, which the disclosure of which would likely affect the property then. What's my motion?
Second.
Any discussion on executive motion, say aye.
Aye.
We memorize.
Very good.
How moved do we go back into regular session?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Carl. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries. We adjourn.
No, that was, that was the other regular session.
Oh, excuse me. We're in regular session, now make the.
How moved do we adjourn?